But now they're short on the other quarters and now there's another, I think it's what? Another $1,000?
Sorry to interrupt, let me get this started and then we can get this back.
Okay, alright, okay.
Welcome to the May 7th Commissioners' meeting. Can we start with our invitation?
Lord, we just come before you throwing this morning thanking you first and foremost for the moisture that we've desperately needed here in Weston County and around the area. We ask that you would help those who had all the snow and stuff that are without power to get it back on, protect those who have to drive and work in this. Now, Lord, today as the Commissioners meet, we thank you again for each of them and we ask you for wisdom, Lord, we remind ourselves that as we humble ourselves in your presence that you're able then to speak into our lives, into our minds and thoughts, those things, Lord, that are going to be beneficial to their constituents. So, Lord, as they work on the agenda today, that you would give them the wisdom and direction they need, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Commissioner Barkley, do you pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need to do any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, Roger will not be here for rare earth update, we need to remove that, please, and we need to remove recording on arpa funds, please.
I move to approve the amended agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda, can I get a second?
A second, Doc.
I have a motion improperly seconded to approve the agenda with the removal of the arpa funds and the rare earth subtraction. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Consent agenda.
We're gonna have to pull that letter on the allocation of funds, or the, not the other, because we don't know if we're, we have to decide if we're gonna request or decline it.
Okay. You guys want to see, want to pass it on?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you gotta pull it, you have to decide what you're gonna do.
Any other agents we're gonna pull on the board?
Um, if you wanna read the letter and tell me.
Sure enough, immediately read it. You can, yep. This is on the, all this is for travel commission. Of course, we can, you're allowed. Travel commission. And we're pulling the chairman's signature on the fund allocations.
What are we gonna do with the request or denying or declining of the funding allocation?
We'll do that afterwards.
Yep, afterwards. I move we approve consent agendas as amended, excuse me.
I got a motion, can I get a second?
A second.
I have a motion that's been properly seconded to pull, we're pulling the funding allocation, we'll review that afterwards, but consent agenda as it stands. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Alright, the allocation, has everybody read it? Discussion?
Lord, reading that, Lucille Dumbrell wanted me to invite you guys to the Episcopal Church on May 16th at 1:00. They're adding the historical property to the list as the oldest church in Weston County.
Thanks. What's the pleasure of the board, do we wanna have discussion on this, or do we want to accept it or decline it?
Question that I have, is there, would there be any reasoning for declining the request?
Isn't this also, and I don't know, but isn't this also, maybe somebody knows that, is this part of what we were doing, is it part of the same area of what we were doing with the advertising for gambling or addiction, or is this all part of the same, so Christie Lipp would be involved with this?
This is, so, the first round of money we've already accepted.
Right.
This is the second round.
Okay.
Each year, there will be more funds allocated to each county from the state. This is the second round of funds.
Okay, so, alright, but it is Christie Lipp's?
No, this is what you guys gave to Bob.
Okay.
Question that I have on this is, is each payment going to be accepted by the board? I was under the understanding that it was an annual cycle.
We don't annually get it, each year you have to either accept or deny the annual funds.
Right.
Allocated to each county.
Okay.
Every year, they take a percentage of what happens in Weston County and they put it into a fund by statute, and those funds are then allocated to each county based upon that, and then you either accept or deny those funds into your county to be used for addiction funds.
I, I would say, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the funds as stated in the letter.
I have a motion to accept the funds, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion that's been properly seconded, discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Now, with this money that you just accepted, are you going to give that to Bob too, or is that going to go to somebody else?
I don't think this is part of that, I mean, those funds.
This all have to be decided on how these funds are given.
Commissioner?
The funds that were allocated last year, Susie, Bob showed up with the first application, so this board decided to give him all the funds, so.
So, he gets these ones to, no.
No, this is a whole new round. So, either if we follow that, what we did last year, the first person to show up and ask for it, we either give it to, or we give it to Christie Lipp to use County White somehow, or.
We have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Any public comment? Okay, moving on. Paul?
Thank you for having me today. Do you mind if I pull up here to the?
Please do.
You do mind?
I don't, please do.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, and I'll need to have that signed after I'm done today unless there's questions on that. I'm handing some things out, now I think, I think Becky sent some financial statements out earlier, and I don't know how much, I know, they're kinda overwhelming, I don't know how much time anybody put into looking at them. I take a lot of the stuff I've covered is gonna be, probably already been addressed and trying to get moving forward on. Susie, Susie, Francis, we want copies. And so, let me hand everything out, and I'm gonna proceed, I'm just gonna go through like I have in the past, if the chairman, if the Commissioners don't have any problem with that, I marked up some copies of the financial statements, some things I wanna cover that are new, that are different from last year, on that, so just a few points that I'll, I'll put. Okay. Either, either. Okay. The first thing I handed out is my communication to the governing board. I've discussed this with you in the past, I think everybody's been here on the Commissioners, heard me at least last year, I don't know, two or three years, I know Nate and Ed have heard me for a long time. Communication to the governing board, the first two, first item, I go through my responsibilities as auditor, and my management's responsibilities for selection, use of appropriate accounting policies, counting estimates are integral part of the financial statements, we go through the estimates that are included in these financial statements that I feel are material. The one thing I wanna point out, on the second page there, under these new property tax statutes, it's way confusing, so I mean, Susie's actually collecting taxes for these financial statements that are almost 18 months in advance, okay? Because they're having to prepay, the energy companies, the production companies have to prepay on their, on their production, they don't know what that production's gonna be, they don't know what the mill levy's gonna be, I mean, you're pretty standard that you're always doing the 12-mill and then allocating the block grants out, but like, the other entities don't know what the tax, what the mill levy's gonna be adopted, or things like that, so I mean, there's a chance, and it's probably not gonna go through you, it's gonna be done at the state level, that if their production goes down, or something like that, that they might be withholding money from you in the future.
I don't understand.
You know, because, because you don't know what their production's gonna be, so they're prepaying on production, and so that's an estimate, and so, but you have the right to spend that money and put it in your budget, but when I come in and do the financial statements, you have, you haven't, you, you don't, I don't know what it is, you don't know what it's gonna be, 'cause it could vary. Okay, so that's kind of, if I'm understanding, that's alright, alright, but that's how the other places have been doing it, so I mean, so we're gonna have a big variance between what the budget property taxes are, what's in the financials property taxes are, okay? And I'll explain that, I've got some notes in my stuff to, to go through that, it's a $500,000 difference, and I figured you got 23, 24 taxes paid in advance.
Now, we're doing 25s.
Now, you're doing 25s, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, so they're have to pre, prepaid 18 months in advance on that, and so then, I don't know, I think they square up through the state, when that production actually occurs, and so then, when, so then, when Susie gets a check going forward, those, those amounts will be either reduced, it might be more, might be less, because they're doing it based upon those estimates, okay?
Paul, there's sometimes where we have to pay them back.
Right, but.
Through the true-up process.
Right, through the true-up process, but I wonder, and I'm not quite sure all the interactings of this work, 'cause I mean, we're only the first year, or year and a half into this, but when you true up, is that gonna be done at the state level, or is the state gonna come back and say?
We have, we have to true up with them.
Right, okay.
So, we have to actually send them money.
Okay, so, right, so I mean, so I mean, you have the right to spend that, but I mean, that, these amounts might vary in the future versus what actually you've received. Does that make sense on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the other item, I, everybody's real cooperative, the difficulties, I know, and I know Francie's here, we had difficulties in working with the fair, okay, and I know everybody knows that, I wanna thank Francie, she is, I don't know what, I don't know if she knows what she's got, but she's been very helpful and everything, and like that, and we've been trying to work through, we got all the books caught up and everything like that, and we got the few odds and ends, and I don't know how the Commissioners are gonna proceed, but I think we're making a lot of progress, okay? Alright, on that, so, I kinda think she got kinda thrown into the fire there.
She jumped in willingly.
But, you know, and I don't know all the background about what, what went, I mean, I, you know, I've talked with David Klein, and Nate called me, and things like that, but, we're, you know, we're trying to work through that, and I think we got things caught up, and, and making some progress going forward, I've got a finding in the report on that, but we did, I mean, and I tried to help out the best I could, I had a lot of records that I had been sent to that, for some reason, weren't at the fairgrounds anymore, but I had been provided a lot of the records as part of my audit in prior years, that I hope helped out some on that, and we tried, tried to work through that and getting stuff recreated going forward, okay, on that. So, those are the things I wanted to copy and cover in my communication to the governing board, is there any questions on any of that?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Now, the big report. I'm gonna just turn to the table of contents here. A couple things, I talked about the property taxes, how that's gonna be handled, the other thing that we did different this year is we brought into, and all the board members aren't, I mean, we've had a lot of discussions in the past, what gets included in this audit, okay? So, now, this year, and probably should've been done, 'cause we had been doing the Central Weston County Solid Waste District already, but now this year, we're pulling into the actual Weston County Solid Waste District also into this, into our report. Now, that isn't costing the county anything, 'cause they're paying for their own audit at this time, okay? So, we did an audit for, for the Weston County Solid Waste, we had never, and so that was completely separate audit, so all as I did is take their financial data and pull it into this report, okay? So, it just is like, it's gonna be presented like the library is, or the, or the Mallow Camp, or whatever, so it's just gonna be a component that's included in this audit, and we've got, and so I billed them separately for that, and the other thing that's gonna be happening with that is that $4 million grant started running through here on that for the landfill, okay? And so, and the county's gotta sponsor that, so, we've got two parts to that, the county's gotta ensure that the Solid Waste District is also complying with the grant, and then we also gotta go back through, so there's two parts, essentially, we're doing kinda dual audit, because since you're a pass-through entity, anything below you, you've gotta make sure that the entity below you is complying with, and the entity that is actually the end, ending entity also, and make sure that they're complying with it, okay, with the federal requirements on that, so I mean, it's, it gets to be a mess, so, on that. But on the financial statements, on the table of contents, the yellow items there, we have two parts, we have the actual, my primary objective when we do an audit is to ensure that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with government reporting requirements issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accounts, so that, American Institute Certified Public Accounts have certain things that needs to be contained in the financial statements, and presented in the financial statements. So, my primary objective is to ensure that the financial statements are materially presented in accordance with standards established by American Institute of Certified Public Accounts for governmental entities. As a byproduct of that, I have to take in, I have to consider laws and regulations that I feel are material to the presentation of the financial statements. Okay, so there might be something, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of laws and regulations that you need to comply with, I'm only concerned with laws and regulations that, that are, lend itself to the financial statements, a lot of those are gonna be the treasury functions, a lot of those are gonna be the purchasing functions, and the controls related to those things that go into the financial statements. Also, the financial statements, then, once we hit the $750,000 in federal aid, then I have to issue a report on just the federal aid, okay? And that's what's there on 59 through 61, okay? So, I have to issue a report on compliance and laws and regulations, I feel are material to the financial statements, and then we have to do the same thing with the federal aid, once we get to $750,000 threshold, and I think you've been over the $750,000 threshold for quite a while now, a lot of that is, is the Bankhead Jones grassland money, okay, on that. And so then, we have the schedule of finding question costs, those are the, I'll go through those, 62 through 65, we already touched on some of those, and then the status, the prior year findings, if we had a finding last year, I have to re-report to make sure it was resolved this year, okay? And then, on, on that, and then, on the financial statement part, I put some numbers there, we've got all kinds of different presentations, I'm gonna start with number three, down there at the bottom, that's gonna be the budgetary information, that's exactly what's presented to you each month, from, like, from Susie and from Becky's office, then we have to, number two, the next set, the next set of presentation, we're focusing on spending of resources, okay? Now, those, that's number two, and that's on 13, 14, 15, and 16, so that's only focusing on spendable resources, so we're focusing on, what did we have to spend, how did we spend it, where was it derived from that we collected it from to spend, what do we have left to spend going forward? Okay, this excludes non-spendable resources, non-spendable resources, 'cause you can't spend the building, you can't spend a road grader, you can't spend the police, the sheriff's vehicles, okay, on that, so that, that excludes the non-spendable resources, then the last level reporting, there's number one, that's gonna include all resources, so that's gonna include the spendable and non-spendable resources, more like you would have in a business, okay? So, it's gonna present more of a profit and loss presentation with depreciation and things of other, and cash in and cash out, okay? And then we have to supplement those with number five, the notes to financial statements, and then number four, the fiduciary fund financial statements, all of that is, is the, pretty much the taxes that Susie collects on other entities, and, you know, you collect taxes for the school district, you pay the taxes to the school district, so that's all that's gonna be included there, and number four, and then the last item I highlighted there, in the, in the blue, is the schedule of federal awards, and this is, once we hit the $750,000 threshold, next year, it's gonna be, you're probably gonna have $5 million in there, this year you had $2 million, this is how the federal government tracks its money, they wanna know where money goes, and we have to input this into the federal government's website, gonna have Becky certify it, and then that way, it reports to the federal government that this is what Weston County received, this is what Weston County spent, and what programs it spent it under, okay? I'm gonna flip ahead, any questions on what's all included in here, okay? I'm gonna flip ahead to page, page 11, and all's I'm pointing out here is, I just included the Weston County Solid Waste District, okay? So, here we have the assets, we have the liabilities, and we have the net position, the deferred inflows, outflows, are items related to the retirement system, and taxes that are collected in advance, like I talked about earlier, we have, on that, on the tax collections, but I just wanna point out, that's where the Weston County Solid Waste is, you can see we have the primary government, that's gonna be everything that's under the Commissioners' control, the library board, essentially, they're all under your control, but the library board, that's operations over at the library, so we audit there, the fair, this is just gonna be what's left at the county fair for their operations, the Weston Solid Waste, and then the Central Weston Solid Waste, but that's all gonna be next year incorporated into the Weston Solid Waste as they merged, as they merged together effective, I think it was effective April, or excuse me, July 1st, '23, that's why there's still two separate presentations there, okay? That'll all become one, and then, then, so that, we won't audit Central Weston County Solid Waste information as part of the county audit, will be audited, and it is part of the Solid Waste District's audit, okay? And then, again, on page 12, I just highlighted there, what's the Weston County Solid Waste District? Okay, I'm gonna skip ahead, I'm gonna go ahead to page 15. I'm gonna talk about the property taxes here, the sales tax, okay, so here's, this is just the, this, you gotta remember, this is the ins and outs, so this is, what did we receive, how, what, how'd we spend it, what do we left have to spend? So, we're reflecting in the general county taxes, the, under the prior year, that's the 22 information, there on the general fund, I have the, that's the 23 information, so when we put the taxes together, that's all the taxes, that'd be property taxes, sales taxes, motor vehicle fees, all different kinds of things, we have to summarize things down, I know Susie gives you a great, big, detailed report, but I can't take that many lines and put that in our report. As you can see, the taxes were up from 3.2 million to almost 3.6 million, 3.3 to 3.6. The property taxes for 22 were 1.8 million, the budget from Susie's numbers were 2.4 million, and what I included in the financial statements was 1.9 million, the difference is that $500,000, what she's collected for future years again, okay, so it was about $500,000 that she collected for 23, 24. Okay, so it was about 500,000 dollars that she collected for 23, 24 taxes in the same, in the year that, at these. So that, those energy companies had paid that much in advance. And of course, you have the right to spend that, like I said, but I just, we need to understand that that is how this is operating now. That's completely different than how it's in the past. The sales tax I put in there, um, they were up about 200,000 dollars. They're in the green there. Um, on the intergovernmental revenue, this is going to be all the grants and everything that the county has received, um, went clear up to 3.6 million, uh, from 2 million. Okay, now, this ARPA fund has been way confusing. Uh, I mean, they've kind of changed the rules as they go. We started out in 22, you were supposed to do it as you spent it, came back, and then you could declare it all lost revenue. And so, I mean, that freed it up all, from all the restrictions. Okay? So I think there's some confusion. I don't know what this, I know Suzie and I have talked about this a little bit. So we got kind of different treatments. So once you declared it lost revenue, freed it up, you do with whatever it wants. And so it's unrestricted in the eyes of the federal government. Okay? Once you did that, because you, you don't have to specify what you're spending it on. But the commissioners can come back. This is going to go the same for the LATCF funds. Once you've, once you've declared it and freed it up in the eyes of the federal government, that doesn't prohibit the commissioners from saying, we want to use this money for a grader. Okay? Or we want to use this money for courthouse renovations, or we want to use this money for, um, uh, you know, police vehicles or whatever. I mean, you could come in and first thing in the morning and say, we want to designate this for, for a motor grader. At the end of the day, you could come back and say, we changed our mind. We want to change this to our courthouse renovations. Okay? Because the federal government no longer cares. Because once you declared it lost revenue, you pretty much have the, you know, I mean, you've got those funds, you can pretty much use it for whatever you want to now. And so we had kind of been setting it back. That's why we had set it up in a special fund to begin with, and then the rules changed. And so then we moved all that back into the general fund.
But now we've moved it back to where it started.
Which you can do. Okay.
Which I have to report on.
For tracking.
For tracking. Okay? But you've already reported as being all spent for lost revenue.
Right. But still, I still have to do that one report we talked about at the end of the day.
Right. Which I'm confused why they still want that because you showed it as all spent on the last report. Um, the other thing on there, on the, that other, intergovernmental revenue, um, I just wanted to point out what the PILT was. For, for 22, it was 1.94 million. For 23, it was almost 700, 650,000 dollars. Okay? On that. So I don't know where the PILT's going to come in at 24 at. I guess you'll get the payment here in about another couple of months.
We have probably.
We have the amount.
Yeah, yeah, you usually got middle of June or something like that. Okay. So I don't, so I mean, that's through that. That was kind of anomaly from, from the year before. Okay? Um, I'm gonna skip ahead now. Go clear up to, oh, my page number got cut off, 55. I may, need to make sure that that print, oh, it got, it got truncated up into the next part. And this is your federal funds. And so I, um, this is how the federal government tracks their money. We have the CFDA number, we have who it's like US Department of Agriculture, WIC. And then WIC has a specific number at, uh, the 10-557. You only got $5,000 of that. Okay? Spent on everybody. Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Um, I, I pointed out there, the forest reserve, that's the big item. That's the things you normally get. Uh, the forest reserve and the Bankhead Jones, uh, money for the grasslands. Um, under there, under the treasury, there's a coronavirus, that's the ARPA funds. And so we ran those through last year because you, we declared them as lost revenue. So that was 1 million dollars. And then the LATCF, um, uh, fund, which is what you actually spent of that, because that, the LATCF does not give you the option of doing that as lost revenue. But you can do it for, just about, I mean, you can spend it on whatever you want. I mean, if you want to say it's salaries, you can say it's salaries. If you want to say it's utilities, you can say it's utilities or whatever. It's just normal operations. But you have to specifically identify what you spent that on now versus the way the, the, um, ARPA funds worked before. Okay? Um, then I'm gonna turn, let's go to 59. Uh, the separation of duties, we've talked about this. I think it's probably a little bit of the issue that came up at the fair, too. You know, when we audit, Nate was asking. I kind of do the same thing, um, here at the general county as I do at the fair, the library, the Mallow Camp. Um, I'm looking through, looking to see if the boards approved what's been spent on that. So I mean, just like you're approving the vouchers, they should have in their minutes that they approve these vouchers or a list of vouchers or something like that, um, on that. I go through, uh, you know, and I make sure, like you were asking about the payroll tax reports. She had sent me all the payroll tax reports to be filed, okay? That she had filed. I forwarded those to, to Francie, uh, yesterday to help out. So, to help her out with that. So I mean, I went through, so I mean, I kind of do the same thing. I make sure the, the bank balances and things like that, and it's reconciled and things, um, on that. So I mean, I do the same things, but when you only have, like here, you've got, uh, two or three, a lot more people looking at it than you do at the fair. I means, um, I think, my guess is some of the stuff at the fair that, like, maybe I shouldn't assume things. But, um, you know, I mean, like these, this IRS notice, I don't know. She maybe never brought that to the board's attention on that. You know, uh, that's just a guess. I better qualify that, um, on that. But so it's just, there's a higher risk when there's only one person involved. Um, and I think it's helped out that the states requiring those boards to go through and do the, the training, the board training. I don't know how long it takes. I think it's a few hours, four hours or whatever, doing the board training on that that's now required. Um, and it has to be reported to the state that I think by the end of 20, June 24, all, uh, all the boards are to, required to have the training completed on that, the online training. And I think each new board member that gets a, gets appointed to a board, I think the commissioners have to go through the board training on that. So I mean, uh, so we're trying to, you know, usually, usually when something happens, I mean, um, and I wasn't involved in the audit, but I mean, there's a big case in Platte County at the fire district. Where he took, the board treasurer took 160,000 dollars or whatever. I had a case that, um, you know, I'm, there was a case that the weed and pest in sub-Pinedale. Um, you know, usually when it's, when, when it's, the further away it gets from the central operations, that's usually a higher risk. Higher risk of problems. Um, or if there's cash collection, that's, you know, a high risk, um, on things like that. Um, then, um, you know, we talked about the fair board. You know, the, I don't know, I guess the main problem that started was there was no accounting records anymore. I mean, because there's reports off of QuickBooks that are in the files that were being presented monthly to the board members, but we can't find the actual QuickBooks, the QuickBooks. So that's what prompted the need to reconstruct everything. I had, I had, she had sent me the file through, um, like September of 22, when we did the 22 audit. But there was nine months of records, um, that didn't exist, and we were having trouble. She sent me a, a version that I can read because I am entitled to a program that can read that. But, um, it's not something that the fair board could go back and reload up. Because she sent me what's called an accountant's version, and it locks everything down and lets me read the files and things like that, but it does not allow somebody to reload that and proceed to enter more data into it, um, on that. Um, we, you know, and then, so I think she'd left in March of 23. We had trouble finding invoices. Um, uh, perjury statements weren't being done. We got that squared away. Um, the bank statements weren't being balanced after she had left. Um, we did get all that caught up, um, on that. We were missing a few things. Um, uh, like I couldn't find part of, uh, um, and I just have to say, anytime that we have, um, I'll be honest, um, anytime that we have a transaction that's with a governing board member, that's a higher risk for us. So like, I think a couple county commissioners had used the fairgrounds for rentals and things like that. And so I need to look, I couldn't find the billing invoices. I found their receipts for their payments, but I cannot find the, the actual bill written. And Francie looked for it and, and David looked for it. You know, the perjury statements, like you signed there, once she had left, that got dropped. So there was some things that, um, we were just kind of missing that just kind of loose ends that weren't getting all put together on that, um, on that. Um, so I, Francie, I don't know if Francie or Dave wrote a response that I put in there. I summarized it down. We got the QuickBooks re, factory installed, updated, um, got the books current, balanced. And so we got, uh, is the, is the clerk being paid by the county now?
Yeah.
So she's in the county? Okay. And so now Francie's overseeing her, making sure everything gets in right. So we're getting, getting some oversight there and things like that. We got to get this IRS, uh, issue cleaned up. I'll talk about that. I think maybe that's what's on the agenda after me on that. So any questions? What, we kind of went through there on the fair. Okay, all right. Okay, you questioned commissioner? Okay, okay, all right. Okay, all right. Then on, and, and just, and this is just kind of my, just a thought. I mean, what I say here, I have no enforcement, anything like that. This is just kind of recommendations. When I go between Becky and I talk with Nate and I talk with Dave and I talked with, with Francie, I think there was a lot of, a lot of gray areas what was, uh, supposed to be happening in this new, in this new world of the fair board. I, I just think if somebody would sit down and draft a memorandum of understanding, I don't have, think it has to be anything real, you know, real extensive or anything like that, but if you just get some of these things cleared up of who's responsible for what. Like one of the things that I came up with, so like the fair board's still setting the rates for the use, but that money's going to the county. So why isn't the county setting the rates? Because it's the county money, it's not the fair board's money anymore. It's just something that, that, that I came across. I mean, there was some confusion of who's responsible for what repairs, things like that.
And I'm gonna get some pushback on this, but I've, my opinion has always been, if there needs to be, uh, a mirror held up, it needs to be held up to the board of county commissioners because we have always crossed the line of we don't want to interfere with the board because they might be managing. And the bottom line is, you just said it about four times, ultimately, we are responsible to make sure these things are done.
Yeah.
If all was dropped.
Yeah.
Which I've said to the, the fair board before, and I've said to the board and the board prior that was here.
Yeah.
We are responsible. We have to come up with a way to make sure these things are handled. Because now we, as the county, are paying the price for it. It's not the fair board that's going to pay those. It's going to be the constituents on back taxes.
Mm-hmm.
That's to answer your question. We can move on.
Yeah. I got a comment on the, and I, I see the potential effect here under separation of duties, increased chance of errors, irregularities, uh, might be tightly detected in the course of enforcement.
Yeah. And I mean, I, that doesn't even mean, that doesn't even mean theft or fraud or anything like that. I mean, so I mean, let's say, I mean, it's hard to budget if, if you got something that's supposed to be in supplies, it's in judges or something like that, or here, something that's supposed to be in road and bridge and ends up in, in the county clerk's budget or something like that. It makes it impossible to do a, an accurate budget. So I mean, that encompasses a lot of things over and above just loss of funds.
And that understanding is, is extremely important. If, on your auditing around the state and with other counties, do you see, uh, the delegation of those responsibilities also handed down to fair, fair board?
Well, right, yeah, right. And so.
Do you see that regularly or is that?
Oh, yeah. No, that's how it's set up. But I mean, it's, I don't know that it's fair because I, I hoping this training that these, you know, and I mean, I don't, I don't think that, you know, I mean, things were pretty, I mean, things are where, you know, I mean, I, sometimes things get rubber stamped. Okay? And I mean, because I mean, I'd go through and see, I mean, every, like, just like you guys, you go through the bills, I'd see the bill list signed off, things like that. It's just, um, and I don't know that there was any loss of funds or anything like that. I, I, you know, I can't prove anything like that. But it just, it's, it's when things get further out, away from here, where there's, with less people involved and things like that, where just things can go easy, it's easier for things to go wrong. Okay? Yeah.
That's why I asked fair board several months ago if it would make sense for the county to run the fair and then, or the grounds and them to handle.
Yes, yeah, right. And that's kind of what we've seen in my other counties. Sublet County did that a long time ago, took over, that they're, I mean, they've got more, I mean, they've got deeper pockets than you do, but, um, by the way, but, um, but yeah, so they've taken over the, they, they took over the, the fairgrounds and, and operating the fairgrounds and have an employee, I mean, they have an employee that does, two employees that does maintenance there. And then they just give enough money to the, um, fair to actually run the fair and then the maintenance. And I think that's what you guys were trying to get at. Platte County's done that. Another, that's another place I audit. They've taken over, um, they've taken over the operations of the, and see, they don't even give the fair there, they don't even give them, let them have the money to, everything goes through the commissioners. Okay? Not eat, so everything just for the fair operations at the actual fair event still comes through. They still have budget line items and everything like that, but that's comes through the commissioners. And then, um, and then Leonard from our office does, uh, audit in Sundance, but is my understanding that's how they proceeded the, the last couple of years. So I mean, that's, it's, um, it is how things, uh, operate. The problem is that you're having somebody run the fair. It isn't a, a high paying position. You know, it, um, so I mean, the, the person's got to be kind of a, a good bookkeeper. Plus they probably, um, might not work well with, I mean, it might be, and then the other part is promoting the fair. And a lot of times those might not be characteristic traits that will go real well together. You know, um, the other thing is, you know, with the limited, uh, resources, I mean, the fair's got to report to the WRS, retirement system's got to do the payroll taxes, payroll reports and things like that. A lot of times it's easier, just easier to put those employees on the county payroll and run that through there.
So Paul, can I get you to move forward and wrap this up so we can include?
Yeah, right. No, I'm done. Oh, the only other item is there then, we had an issue with when Suzie moved some money to, to, uh, the bank in Upton. Um, they didn't set the account up right. So then the account did not get secured. You know, everything that you got over the FDIC insurance limit, you got to secure that with the bank. The bank's got to secure that on your behalf. Uh, and they didn't set the new amount up correctly, and so it ended up being unsecured at the time we did our audit. Um, I think maybe it was, it got fixed between the end of the year and the time we did our audits. That's all, that's all the thing I wanted to come there on the last item. And then last year we had the, the, we've had, had. And then, last year, we had, we've had in there, the issue about getting some new, and I know it's been kind of a process, new employee personnel policies and things like that, to include the law enforcement, and that, that got taken care of. That's everything I wanted to cover on that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take up too much time.
No, that's what's important, so it's fine.
Here's my contract, you wanted that for 24, if you want us to do the audit?
Did you need that signed as well?
And I need this signed by the chairman.
Okay.
And you can send that to me, if you wanna do that at another time.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, okay. Do you want me to hang in on this?
Yeah, if you would.
Okay, alright, I can, okay.
I might need some help.
Okay.
First of all, I'm gonna talk about the IRS thing, okay? Paul's been helping me tremendously, and we need to file 941 for the first quarter of '22, to get, because it was not done. So I, Paul did that for me, it's right here, I'll just, I just gotta sign it and send it in. And then, Becky called, called them, and we need the EFTP statements, do you have those? You know, the deposits that she made online?
No, I mean, yeah.
Okay, I'll go look and see if I can't find those.
I think they're in the file cabinet there, but, yeah.
I don't know if they are.
They just want the ones that she actually sent, because...
I've got a list.
They're gonna need proof, because there is some stuff that we can do to try to recoup.
Okay.
We can send a grievance letter.
Yeah, I've got all that ready to go.
Yeah.
To go to the IRS.
I think you had those, Francie, when you matched them up with the IRS records we received back?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did most of that, yes.
Oh yeah, okay, did you match those up and we did that?
Anyway, that's where, that's at right now. So, I don't know if you guys, do we have, need to pay that right, right away?
What is owed, does have to be paid, because what was happening was, the IRS was paying the wrong amount to the wrong quarter.
Yeah, so, right, so I, yeah.
And so what happened is, it ended up showing a credit owed to the, to the fairgrounds, and so they cut the check. I was on the phone with him for two hours, trying to get it figured out, and it was a total mess, the guy was like, I don't understand what the, he was with the IRS, and he said, I don't understand what the IRS was doing, and he was trying to help me get it figured out, and there was actually more refunds given to the Fair Board than actually what was originally thought. I, we were finding them on those sheets that they had sent to Francie, they were smaller, not as, not the thousands of dollars that were sent, and I said, so, if there's money owed, the IRS should have never sent a refund, ever.
Refund.
And he said, right, so I don't know what the IRS was doing. So, we were trying to figure out why the refunds were sent, if it was showing thousands of dollars owed, you don't send thousands of dollars to a company if they owe you money. He couldn't figure out why, and he said, well, do you still have the checks? And I said, this was from 2019, why would they still have the checks? Well, if you still have the checks, we could just fix this, we have the deposit. So he said, the fairgrounds can file a grievance, that the IRS credited it to the wrong quarter, and possibly get some of the money back.
They might reduce the penalties, let's put it that way.
Right, but, they can't do that until the money is paid, and what I'm thinking is, the money's gonna be paid, and then, no credits may be issued back.
Yeah, that's a problem, once they get it, it's hard to get it back.
So the 8,000 or whatever, just has to be paid.
8,100, maybe, dollars and sixty cents.
And there's a thousand that needs to be moved from the third quarter of '22 into the second quarter of '22.
So, it's gonna be actually more than this, if another payment has to be sent?
No, there's a credit in there. There's a credit of 1,226.10.
So it's not gonna be this amount due?
Yes, it is gonna be that much, but that's, the credit is for the...
It's gonna be less than, 8,000 less that, 1,026.
So we'll only have to send them a check for 7,000? Okay.
Yeah, you gotta get, you gotta get that, you gotta get that 1,026 moved into second quarter '22, and that's gonna take the liability off of second quarter '22.
Well, and I'll cloud this up a little bit, when I met with David and you afterwards, I called the, the office in Salt Lake City, because I was confused on why we were getting credits if we owed, and I got a very brief answer, that some of those payments, from what they were seeing, were sent in late, which may have caused some of the confusion of what was credited and what was not, but then, when Becky took it over, I knew she'd get it figured out, I just, the late payments also clouded all this.
The other issue that caused problems here, because we're saying, and, the reports were sent in during this timeframe, the IRS was like, nine months, a year out processing, they had stacks of mail sitting in, and bags of mail that they wouldn't, weren't opening, they just let them sit for months on end.
Well, you can see that they took, like, seven months before they would even put the check.
Well, see, some of the ones that I found...
It's their fault on a lot of this.
The 941s, the date on them are like, 2/22.
Well, good luck convincing that IRS, that they're the ones that are...
The problem is, how much time do you wanna spend on it, to try to get it corrected, versus what the, what the cost benefit would just be to, to get it down to as little as you can, and pay the difference?
So I saw, in my calculations, I saw where there was only, should have been 7,000 dollars owed, without the interest and penalty, they sent 4,018 dollars in refunds.
Yeah, so I mean, the net cost of county is like, 3,000 dollars.
Right. The amount that should have been owed was 2,992 dollars and forty-seven cents, after I went through all of this.
That sounds about right, yeah.
Where are we at with payment, what do we have to do?
So I didn't realize that there was a whole order that needed to be done, so, but Paul said it should only be 7,000.
I don't have that stuff in front of me, sorry.
Yeah, because there's, there's still a payment that's loose, that has not been applied to anything.
So Paul said, you should...
8,180, 108, 33.
But Paul said that's not the amount, because he said there's a credit.
8,108, 33.
But that's not right, Paul said that there's a credit, and so it should only be 7,000 instead.
That, that credit is in there for the first quarter of 2022.
You're gonna get into the same situation that we're in now, if we don't pay that, and then, they'll move it forward, I think.
See what I'm saying? That credit is, that's what they told me, that credit is in there for the first quarter of 2022.
No, that credit's in there for the third quarter of '22, it's in there for the third quarter of '22, but for the third quarter of '22, the fair was no longer doing payroll, the payroll agreement was running through the county.
Right.
Yes.
But they told me, Paul.
Why don't we pay the 8,000 dollars, and just get a credit back?
If we do.
If we're over, and then it's, let them figure it out.
And I will get all this stuff ready to go.
And if we don't pay it all, they'll have penalties on top of it, so I think he's, Commissioner Todd's correct.
I'd make a motion, I'd take it.
Hold on, Commissioner, and that number's correct, through tomorrow, correct, the eighth, that's...
That's what they told Becky.
So they said not to pay the interest and penalty, just what is actually on this, the last bill we got, the 8,108, 33.
Okay.
Make a motion, make pay the 8,108, 33 out of the ARPA, 150, 32, zero, two, nine, three zeros, one, two, two, six.
What, what's in there, Commissioner? Did, I didn't...
It's those ARPA funds that we need to spend, but it's our only chance, I mean, it's not like money we wanna use for, there's like, 700,000 dollars in there, but...
Oh, I see.
We're probably gonna end up using it for dispatch.
Gotcha.
We would want to hire somebody to do that.
Second.
Go ahead. So I have a motion that's been properly seconded, any discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Paul, it's easier for us, it's easier for me to see those ARPA funds broken into a separate line item.
Yeah, right.
Would you recommend not doing that?
No, you can do it however. I, I can do with it, you need to do your accounting on what best meets the needs for reporting to the commissioners.
Okay.
Okay? That is, I mean, you've got all kinds of leeway, how you wanna do that. So you need to do your accounting, and your presentation, and the budget, in a way that's best meets your needs, not my needs, your needs, okay? As long as it meets statute, I can't say anything about it, okay?
So I have a motion that's been properly seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor of moving money, or paying it out of the ARPA funds account, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Paul is opposed? Let's move on to the basis.
Okay, now on another note, I was wondering if you guys would set up a endowment fund, so we can start taking donations for fair? And use them, and if we could, according to state statute, be in charge of them.
The request I have for you is, I'd like to put you guys back on the agenda, the commissioners can decide the endowment fund, but as I said to you and Dave when you were here with, one question I know the commissioners would have, is how are we going to prevent this from happening again? I think there needs to be a process, I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it.
Well, this is just a separate account.
No, I'm talking about the tax issues.
Yes, it's not gonna be a problem, because I'm going to oversee that very closely, because I have to do it for myself, so I can do it for that.
Right, but my worry is, is if, what if, I'm not saying I hope you're there forever, and I appreciate you taking it on, but we have to look at a process that is, if you weren't there, or...
What I'm going to do is, I'm going to start a notebook, on the process of how to, you know, I do it online, step-by-step, instructions on where to go, what to do, and blah, blah, blah. Down, and I'm, I'm working on a MO of you, to, between you guys and us, and I will get with some...
Can, we, yeah, can you bring that back to the board?
Yep.
And show us what we're gonna do.
But, it might not, it might be next month, because of the fact that...
Get with Becky, when it's a good time, let's make it sooner than later, so that we don't have...
Okay, because I'm gonna be going south here pretty soon, as my daughters do any day, so, it will be as soon as I can.
Okay. The endowment fund, it's a pleasure of the board. Commissioner.
From what I've looked into already, that, it looks like it'd be a good way to set that up there, and the tracking is, there's a good method of tracking it, where it goes and how it's spent.
Well, it's what I was, what I was thinking I'm doing, is just making a spreadsheet, okay, say, Pinnacle Bank gives us 1,500 dollars for Ranch Rodeo. What I'd do underneath that, I would say, okay, we spent this much on buckles, or whatever, that's my plan.
It's, what I liked about it is, though, a person can make a donation, earmark it for something, and there's a way to track it, that it went exactly to what it was spent for, or what it was intended for. The way it'd been the past, it went into there, and it was just kind of a pool that got, the tracking wasn't very good on.
Yeah, but there will be tracking on all of it.
I would, I personally be in favor of it.
Is, is this a line item, or just, do you need a different checking account, or how?
I don't know, whatever you guys decide, you wanna have, how you wanna set this up. You guys have to set it up, according to state statutes.
I would have to set one.
They could like, set up a line item, and then they could just, voucher, and then, that money, we could roll over each year.
Can I input? You just do it like you did the ARPA.
Yep. Awesome.
Just set up a line item.
But, what we need is, like, if somebody, we need the money right away, we can't wait for a commissioners meeting, we're gonna need the money right away through fair. You know, like, say you get 3,000 dollars in donations for the bouncy houses, we're gonna have to pay them as soon as they leave.
Right.
It's not gonna be a month later, we have to, that's their rule, on the bouncy houses and stuff.
So you're gonna know ahead of time, that you have set up the bouncy houses, and you have set up the jumpy things, or whatever, and you could come, a meeting ahead of time, and ask the board, once you get those vouchers, if we can do a prepay, and then you can just do a prepay voucher, we can have the check in our office, but you have to have it, just to have a pre-authorized, prepaid for those ones that you know are coming in ahead of time, before they meet again.
Yeah.
And they can, we can do a prepaid, for those ones that they approved ahead of time.
And you can have the check, and when they leave, here's your check you paid, because you'll know ahead of time what it's gonna cost you.
Right.
So you can come in, do a prepaid voucher, check's cut, sign, and sit there waiting for them to leave.
Okay, say, like, for the Ranch Rodeo, we pay out for second and third, it's not, I mean, we have donations coming in for that, too. How are you gonna do that, when it's, when we don't know how much each one of them's gonna get?
Commissioner.
Wasn't that part of that Calcutta stuff that we talked about?
No, it's not.
It's not the Calcutta?
No. We were gonna run that a different way, the Calcutta part of it, but they still get for second and third place, that Calcutta is totally...
Paul, how do Ranch Rodeos, how would that work coming through our account?
Well...
I don't think they can.
I've seen prize money, I mean, I mean, well, the prize money that was being paid out, prior was being paid out a month and a half after the event, and so, I mean, they might have to wait, the other option is, and I hate to see this, but I've seen it done this way in fairs, is where they have all the prize money, they know what prize money's gonna be paid out, they, they go down and get, get a voucher, go down in cash, and get a cash, and then, so then, when you pay out cash prizes, and then, so when that person gets their 500 dollars, they need to sign a statement saying, I've received 500 dollars cash, for this, received, you know, and the problem is, then you're walking around with, you know, I mean, once you got two, whatever, dollar, 1,500 dollars of cash, or whatever, chance that that could be lost again.
Francie, have you guys talked with Justin Mills on that? I know he was, he has done the Ranch Rodeo in the past.
No, we have, I have, but I can't.
Okay, that might be a good source, to see how they've done it.
I got a question for Paul on this, could the Fair Board, could we set up an endowment account, that the Fair Board has a checkbook for, but yet, when it comes audit time, it will fall under their audit, when you look at it, you can see what was taken in and how it was paid out?
Well, isn't that kinda what we're operating now?
Well, it comes through the county.
That's with the fair.
That's with the fair.
Okay.
But on this endowment fund, or this endowment account.
Yeah.
I mean, that way, it would be a separate checkbook, a separate account, it's marked endowment, so when a donation comes in, it goes into the endowment account, and they have to show, this came in, earmarked for this, it went out.
That would be between Suzie and Becky, how they'd wanna set that, I mean, yeah, it's legal, yeah.
Well, I mean, that'd be illegal, that way they could pay the...
It would be the semantics, how that gets done, and how that gets incorporated into the accounting records of the, of the county, I mean, I mean, yeah, you set up a separate account.
Well, I just, I, my thought is, that it's somehow that, when you come in to the audits, you can look at it and say, okay, it balances out to the penny.
How about, how about the, the Fair Board sets up an account, that's got a 10 dollar balance in it, okay? And so then, they set up, and so then, they know what the Ranch Rodeo prize money's gonna be, is 1,500 dollars, the county can pre-fund that 1,500 dollars, so there'd be 1,510 dollars in there, and then they write out the 1,500 dollars in pressed account, it's gonna drop it right back down to the 10 dollars.
No, because that was what we ran into last time, is they had three or four different checking accounts, and they weren't giving it to the county, and we had no idea, and they were just spending like, crazy amounts. And we had no idea, and they were just spending like crazy amounts of checking out.
What you could do is they could set up the account, but have one of you or Suzie, Suzie would be, because that's what it says in the, um, state statutes that the treasurer would be in charge of that, have her on the account also so she can go and check it out anytime she wants to.
Yeah, I mean, you can have everybody sign on it, yeah.
Yeah.
Could, could I ask you to work with Becky and Suzie to come up with what's gonna work best for our accounting practices? In that, in this little interim here, we'll get it, they wanna get it set up, that way it's... And then we can get an explanation on it afterwards and be on, on pace to keep moving.
Okay.
Alright.
Sounds good. Thanks, Paul.
Hey, thank you guys for coming in. Thank you for the extra work on taxes.
Let me know if anybody can call me, ask me, and hate me. Let, let me know if you have any questions, okay? That's what I'm here for.
Mr. Curly. Thank you for the extra work on taxes.
Let me know if anybody can call me, ask me, and hate me. Let, let me know if you have any questions, okay? That's what I'm here for. Mr. Curly, you're up.
Thanks, Paul.
Hey, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning. Did you get in touch with anybody on that statute?
Which one, the other one?
The abandonment statute. I see you earlier today. Did you distribute that? Mr. Hurst, thank you. I asked for this time just to bring you up to date in, at least on some things relating to the resolution twenty-four ten and the request for a letter. When that resolution originally passed and the way it was worded, I thought the next step was send it to the Republican Party, state party. And they would do their part. But I've talked to Frank Eathorne and Brian, the attorney for the party, at some length, and they requested that there be a letter. I said, that's what we normally have, we like to follow that process. So whether I can find a requirement in statute or not, it's a requirement, it's a request that's been made. Please, uh, let us have a written notice by letter of the resolution. And we'll take it from there. So I drafted for this discussion to show you what it might look like. Posed letter to Chairman Eathorne. It sets out the two requests that are set out in the resolution itself, so it doesn't plow any new ground. It's not asking anybody to do anything that wasn't already in the resolution. So, that's why I'm here.
Uh, yeah, I, I got the letter, I read it. Got many calls from different areas, as I'm sure you've heard. We did pass the resolution in support of this, this board did pass the resolution in support. And we're still in support of it. I am working with Michael. I am talking with these representatives. You already know the question has become up that how can we claim a vacancy that they claim is not there? So, uh, there hasn't been a letter yet. I haven't got with Michael to put a letter together yet because I wanna make sure that we're not putting the county in any financial restraints or in any risk because we support that resolution, you know, according to the constitution. So it hasn't been pushed under the table. I, Michael and I have talked and reviewed some of those things and, um, we're just taking our time to make sure that what we're doing and how we're handling it not only doesn't interrupt or disfect, disinfect your process, but doesn't the county. Go ahead.
Who's "we"? I haven't been included in any of these conversations.
"We" is, I, he, Michael called me and asked about a letter and I went down and looked at it. Uh, and that's where we're at with it, so that would be the "we".
That's almost the editorial "we".
What does say in statute that you shall immediately notify in writing the chairman of the State Central Committee?
It does. And that's how they're interpreting a letter. I figured since the resolution was in writing and since the resolution said, here's the notice of it.
One good thing.
Yeah. But, but, yeah. Brian may just be being cautious. So does that mean that...
What, what it means is, is I will, we'll continue, I'll talk with Michael. Once I figure out what, what we're, the plan is, I'll present it to the board. The, the board will, will figure out what letter needs to be written and then we'll move forward with it. But like I said, at this time, we've been discussing it, Michael and I, on the letter that he got from you earlier, I believe it was, wasn't it?
Okay, so that's the general understanding, I, we're right at this minute of the board. Can I ask you where that language comes from, uh, that you just used? Positions that don't really exist?
Uh, what do you mean?
Whose language is that?
Um, this Eth, this Frank Eathorne questioned how we were declaring a vacancy when there was no vacancy. So it's, it's all stuff that we talked about in that meeting.
Okay, and so just, I hope you keep in mind, in this case, when I, I heard Frank say those words myself.
Yes.
And I, Frank's, for what, he's been having difficulty grasping. The legislature makes electoral law and has provided for multi-county districts, so to speak. And the constitution makes electoral law and provides that the county have a rep and a senator. Trying to, one doesn't cancel out the other. So when you're dealing with Frank, I hope you keep working on that with him. He seems to think the legislature is the only source of law.
Whatever moves I'll make, I'll, it'll be with the county attorney and what the board's just backing on it. That's, that's just, that's where we're at.
I appreciate you being where you're at, and I hope you'll stay alert to the confusion people have between what the legislature says and what you're sworn to uphold.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That being, no questions?
Any questions from the board?
Not even you, Nathan?
Nope.
Thank you.
I'll call you if I have any.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Fine, thank you.
EMS, Mr. Sorev.
Good morning, Honorable County Commissioner.
Good morning.
May I sit? Thanks. Um, so I'm approaching you guys today as a representative from the city council, um, at the board's pleasure. We, uh, have been discussing options with, in regard to EMS. I know that Commissioner Borton and Commissioner Taylor were in attendance at the workshop that was held in Upton in October of last year. One of the options that was put on the table was the formation of a special district in, uh, ambulance district. I, I know it's a requirement that, um, the commissioners be approached by, you know, two incorporated towns, um, in the county. And I've been in correspondence with Nick Trandle, uh, which I can see he's in attendance today on, on teams. But he told me that, that I could, um, speak on his behalf that, that Upton would be favorable to having the EMS district added to the ballot. And, uh, and the city of Newcastle would also like to see, um, the EMS district added to the ballot. You know, a humbly request that it be added to the ballot. Uh, we just want our constituents to have a voice in this matter. Uh, we think that it would be a good source of income. If the constituents find it favorable to vote for said district, that we could, uh, maybe try to negate some of the, um, issues that we're having with emergency medical services in our county. So, um, I don't wanna take up too much of you guys' time, um, but I, uh, that is my request.
Um, part of the reason, uh, the council, City of Newcastle Council is in favor and asks councilman Owens to come and direct to you guys, the councilor of putting it on the ballot for our constituents. In two thousand twenty-three, there were six hundred and ninety-four calls for the Newcastle ambulance service. Um, a hundred and twenty of those were transfers. A hundred and sixty-five were county, fifty-five were Upton, and six were out of jurisdiction. Um, if you look at city and county, that's a thirty-seven difference in calls for service between city and county. And in two thousand twenty-four, we're at two hundred and three calls already, just with Newcastle ambulance. Um, a hundred and, or a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and three are city and sixty are county, which is a forty-three calls for service difference between city and county. So if the, if the commissioners don't want to put, um, the ambulance district on the ballot, we at least try to see if we can split costs when it comes to services, or monies to the Campbell County ambulance service. And also in the future, having the ambulance district, if we no longer have Campbell County, the funds will be there for the next ambulance service.
I asked to be placed on the ballot specifically to ask the commissioners humbly if we could get it added, EMS district added to the, to the ballot so the constituents can speak on that. And, uh, it seems like the matter has piggybacked my, uh, my request for something that I wasn't comfortable talking about today. Uh, we were just wanting you guys to specifically think about adding the EMS district to the ballot so that we could, uh, explore that funding option if the, the district was formed.
Go ahead.
Okay. Wait, the way this works. We as board of commissioners, we can form a district by a resolution. That was what was done in legislation in twenty-three. If I'm, I'm no lawyer, so this is what I took out of this, is we can do that. We, we will have to appoint up to a three, to no more than, one of them said five, or nine, but most of them are going with either a three or a five board, member board. The board then will have to go out for election. The board will have to set it up for, the mills can be two mills. If it passes through the elect, or through the election process, the county decides, the electoral people do two mills. That can always stay at two mills. You can all, that board can also come back, like the hospital does, and ask for an additional two mills. But that is done every election, they have to ask for that, would have to ask for that. So, you know, you could get up to four mills if both passes, but you, if on one level it passes, you can get two mills guaranteed, that'll always stay there. If the board, if, if that board gets flushed with money for some reason, you can drop that mills down to a smaller percentage. But actually going through that process with the solid waste district, we always ask for more than what three mills amounts to. That way you're guaranteed you get the three mills. Like we, that board would ask for, say right now, uh, two mills comes out to, or two mills comes up to four hundred thousand. In your budget request, you would ask for like four hundred twenty-five, that way you can get that full two mills. So, you know, and keep in mind, if this goes through, you're probably looking at eighteen months minimum before you start getting monies coming in. I mean, that eighteen months is gonna be a minimum probably by the time it goes through all the processes because you're not gonna get money right away because it's gotta go ahead of time. Then we also have to have, that board would have to set up what boundaries they want incorporated. They'll have to have that, that, that boundary set up for taxing purposes before it can go on the ballot for the two mills.
Oh, so, I mean, the, the special district has to be on its way to formation before it can go on the ballot?
Oh, yeah, there's a process. The, the county has to form the district by a resolution. Board members have to be appointed. And the way I read statute is, those board members don't have to be elected because the way the new legislation says on the, in the EMS district, they can be reappointed. So they don't, so you don't like the hospital board having that election today? You don't have to have your board members elected. The way it reads, they're appointed by the commissioners. So, but, yeah, once that's, once that's done, then you have to get your boundaries set up. Everything has to become to us for Becky to get it on the ballot.
The mill goes on the ballot?
Yeah, the mill goes on the...
On the formation of the district.
Yeah, the formation of the district can done, be done by resolution by the board.
Okay.
And then we are, as a board, are responsible for putting people on it. We appoint those people.
Commissioner Wagner, so, um, forgive my ignorance of the process. So what I guess we are asking is if our constituents find it favorable. So we wanted to see if they're by popular vote, if people even wanted a district. If the people don't want the district, then we weren't gonna try to pursue forming the district.
That's not an option.
That's not an option.
We have to form the district. When the, then the people are appointed to that district, they have to get out the outline of what is gonna, what property's gonna be in that district for taxation purposes. That gets advertised out there and put to the voters. That's, that's when it goes to voters if they're gonna fund the mill levy or not.
Okay, so if they vote it down, then it dies?
Well, you're still the district, but then you might as well dissolve the district because there's no...
Because nobody's gonna, okay, so, um...
Is that clear as mud?
That, no, I understand now. I mean, I guess it was just the idea that we wanted to explore because, um, we wanted to know, because i- if it's gonna come with a mill levy, people are gonna have to pay extra taxes. Um, you know, people are already sick of paying extra taxes. Or paying more for anything in general, right? So we just, uh, and I understand that that's not an option now.
That's, that's the process it takes to get it moving forward.
Okay. So, um, so I guess, uh, I guess all, it seems a little bit convoluted, if I may say so, because, um, I mean, if you go to all the trouble of forming a special district and then, you know, you spend all the time, the energy, the money, and then, and then it just gets voted down when it comes time, then, um, that just seems like a giant waste of time. Instead of just being able to ask the constituents, hey, do you guys want this? And then, so, I mean, yeah, go.
So it's pretty simple, really. We have to advertise, I think it's sixty days or something like that.
Okay.
Prior to the formation of the district, then the county can form the entire district. We can say, Weston County, you're in.
Okay.
You're in the district. You have sixty days then to come, we need to let you be heard, yada, yada, yada. And then, once the district, I think it's, it takes a percentage, like sixty percent of landowners have to approve that the, well, no, that's the formation of the district, so it's, once it's formed, it's formed.
Yeah.
And you still have that sixty days to hear whether or not they want it. It's your mill levy then if you decide.
You can get a lot of...
Put it on the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can get a lot of constituent feedback. You're supposed to, uh, it's in eighteen twelve one oh five. Yeah, you're supposed to have that here, public hearing on this, about a district like this. You can get a lot of constituent feedback before you go through all that process.
Do I just stick you out?
Oh, I got it.
Anybody?
Thanks, Clerk Adwa.
Great to...
I was gonna say, so basically you need to have a town hall and then also ask, you want for a resolution, uh, request a resolution by the county commissioners to move forward.
We can do it right here, just today. I mean, you just have to advertise hers.
Yeah, once...
You don't have to have the towns...
No, actually that would be better to have after the district is formed. That way you can get, you know, the district can be formed, then after it's formed, the district will have to go to the, opposed to the assessor, the boundaries. So then it can get put, moved forward that way. So then it can get put and move forward that way, get so.
Well, I I guess I could have saved us a couple of steps if I would just uh got schooled up on the statute before I came in.
Statute's pretty clear.
Okay.
Um, so I have a question. How does the current ambulance feel about it? Now, having said that, I've always wanted to keep, and I think a lot of people wanted to keep the revenue and the ambulance service here when we originally approached the hospital. It didn't happen, but how does this ambulance service feel about that? The eighteen month gap before we start getting revenue to provide funding for that ambulance service? Because they're private and, I mean, they could just say, you know, we're out of here. I I got it, go ahead. Oh, oh, good, there we go. I didn't see you there, sorry.
How are you today?
Good.
So the I I'll tell you right now that the ambulance probably would not be able to function without some support from the town and the county. Regardless of where the buddies come from. One of the things that I presented on to both the city and the county about um was the CMS taxing district. And how it'd be a potential more sustainable option rather than general appropriations from tax dollars from the community. The understanding that yes, it's going to take a little bit for a taxing district to build up some sort of cash flow or cash account. Help subsidize any sort of ambulance services provided to the community. One of the things that we heard through the legislature this year um in regards to ARPA funding for EMS regionalization. The governor had promised around ten million dollars and put out a big grant. Campbell County has been supplied with a due fund letter for quite a bit of that money. That we were excited to have an input and do some capital purchase and some training opportunities for all of the areas that we were responsible for. However, it came back to us from uh the governor's office, Jen Davis, and through some of the appropriation committee members. Was that since none of the counties in Wyoming had reached out for the ability to utilize an EMS taxing district. Was that they didn't feel like other funding avenues such as utilizing ARPA funds were the best use of funding that would that was available at the time. So it's the encouragement from the state that counties reach out and try at least to put EMS taxing districts on ballots. But from my perspective, um we would absolutely need to kind of continue to make up some of the funding until the CMS taxing district has some sort of a cash account that can take over that subsidy that's currently being provided. Hopefully that was as clear as I.
No, that answered my question. On on like, basically, the what came down from legislatures, if you guys aren't helping yourself, we're not going to help you.
That's exactly it.
Then in a nutshell, that's what they said.
So um EMS is a super complicated subject. And it's uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of trouble across our whole state. So, you know, the idea is that we want to try to do something to fix it. Um, you know, we have small communities like Upton that are uh, you know, providing reimbursement for people to take the 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 course of county EMTs and and uh pass their test. And maybe make a pool of people that either Campbell County Health Services can hire. Or um, you know, or uh Upton actually has volunteers. So um they're they're trying to do something about it. Uh, the city of Ca- of Newcastle, I believe, would like to do something about it. So the uh the EMS district is one of those things that uh that we uh think would would be moving forward in the process to try to do something about it. And then another thing that I found uh particularly vexing was the fact that um EMS is not considered an essential service. Which it just blew my mind, I can't believe you that, you know, you have uh law enforcement professionals, you have firefighters. But but EMS providers are not considered an essential service. And and get retirement through the state or, you know, so on and so forth. And and I I was an EMT for four years and uh I uh I think that the job that they do is a hard one. It's something that not a lot of people want to do. So we got to do something to fix this problem. But uh anyway, uh so what is your advice to me today then? How do we, how do we move forward with this?
I'm going to go out on a limb and move forward with this. I would make a motion that we move forward with the resolution forming an EMS district. And proceed from that so we get this moving. And ultimately, it will come out on a ballot for if they're going to pay the mill levy. But the resolution or my motion would be to uh form an, the county commissioners write a resolution forming an EMS district.
So I've got a motion, do I have a second on that motion? One second, discussion. I I'm I'm not going to uh beat around the bush about this one, but so I'm assuming if we do that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner. Assuming if we do that, there'll be a gap in that eighteen months, just say, to get that going if everything works out and is and is approved. So I'm also assuming in turn that the city of Newcastle is requesting that we split the cost of the ambulance until that process is gone, if I'm mistaken, please let me know. I've I've taken a, my personal, I can't speak for the board, um but that's an essential service and I want whatever the the community wants. However, uh we just finished a process with a joint powers board and a dispatch board. Um, and not trying to cloud it up, but the county ate the cost for the new dispatch equipment. Which was extensive when the city of Newcastle and also a central service could have stepped up and paid even a little bit and originally suggested that. My question to you guys is, okay, we increase our costs, you decreased your costs. Um, how how is that not paying, splitting that? Because it it washes it out and it's not meant to be an argument, it's a legitimate question, it's a lot of money, so.
So Commissioner, um, may I speak?
Go ahead. The question on the floor is resolution, it's not about funding what's available, where we're at now.
Well, but there's discussion and it's a good question.
Discussion, and on that discussion, I don't want everybody to get their hopes set too high that this is going to fix it or even go through. I mean, it's an option that we can move forward with.
That's all we're asking for, Commissioner Wagner, and then um Commissioner Taylor. We all know that the whole dispatch discussion was a contentious one. We're, you know, I personally, on the city council, I want to squash it. It's formed, it's happening. I don't think that we need to dredge up the past, we need to move forward in a positive direction. It's there, it's happening.
And it's a good thing.
So as far as the cost share and everything, again, I came here today to ask for what Commissioner Wagner has on the floor right now. I asked for it in a different way and he fixed me, right? So um that is something that we're going to have to speak uh about as a board. And then reapproach the county commissioners at a later date.
Well, budget's right around the corner.
Right, we're in the middle of our budget process too. And uh so um I understand what you're saying. I I I think what we're here today to talk about was the formation of the special district. And and the the resolution is on the floors.
I'm okay with that, but I think it's short sighted because if we do pay that extra money, that's right hand in hand with this. So, but go ahead, Commissioner Todd.
Can you read the motion back to me, Becky?
Commissioner Wagner moved to move forward with a resolution forming an EMS district.
So, okay, so we're. Let's let's create, I think, so we understand the intent of the motion. It's to create the resolution for the proposed district so that then we can advertise for sixty days for public comment on that proposed resolution, so we can then sign it.
Move forward to create the resolution.
Legislation and the red lettering that just came out last year specified some exact stuff.
Yeah, it we have, this where we have to do the, after July, verse twenty three.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to, we can form the resolution, that has to have sixty days before we sign it.
Right, and I wanted to clarify that because of this timing, it will probably no not go on this ballot. So it's going to be two more years before it will go on the ballot.
I think that's the eighteen month discussion.
Yeah, and then and then after that eighteen month, after it's on the ballot, it's still going to be a year before you start getting funds in because of the tax collection cycle.
I mean, if that's the process, we we need to start it.
Proposed resolution, we have to have the proposed boundaries.
Which will be the whole county.
And the Department of Revenue for review of any conflict or overlap. So I think, and then we have to do the sixty days before a signature is done to even create it.
Yep, it's a process.
But we'll just piggyback off of another county's deal their resolution.
Yeah. Yeah, but advertising.
Right.
For a couple of months and then depending on the outcome of that, potentially sign.
Any other discussion? There's a motion on the table. All those in favor of passing to form or set up to form an EMS district? Please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks, Mr. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, real, thank you.
Bye, bye.
Have a good day, everyone.
So in your packets, there should be a Wild Help printed off for the guys.
You want to take five minutes? That's fine, five minute reset.
You probably need it too. Is that something that if you had a district set up, could you do a special election? Do you have to wait to the next general election?
There's some, I think there's some gray area on that, but I think you, other, because otherwise you're going to, that district's going to incur the cost of putting on a special election.
Okay.
And they ain't got the money.
Well, if it's sixty days, I mean, our primary is not too obvious, so our ballots won't be printed till after that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there'd be a really tight window.
It'd be tight.
Yeah. To get it on that cycle.
No doubt.
How's the weather down south looking nice?
Rainy.
Yeah, stuff's closed up north here. Talked to our road and bridge, you said a guy had to get a blade, eighty-five was closed.
How's the border been running today?
Bring it on tomorrow, so hopefully it opens up.
Oh, it'll be clear by this afternoon. Then we went up, tried to go up Beaver Creek Road, he got a far way up there, there's ten inches, ten, like ten inches of lush.
Newcastle must have just been out of it.
He acted like he wanted to do that here last night.
Our rain gauge, we had three inches of moisture.
It's great, I'm stoked.
Thank you.
My my kids, my kids got up the other morning, they said, Dad, I thought it was supposed to be April showers brings May's rain. I said, honey, I know, sometimes it, sometimes it doesn't work that way though.
Last year it was way late.
It was late.
Memorial Day weekend started raining and.
And it what, summer?
Green all the way to our crook. So I'll take it again this year.
I don't think I had water until like August. That's true. That's true, those fields are getting muddy.
So we need to add this to the agenda, these two things, because they're not on our budget for yet. Please, thank you.
Agenda's been set.
Huh?
Our agenda's been set. Are those jelly beans?
Oxenhaws.
Oh.
Oh, look at my eye, workers comp.
We'll file it in my office. So power lines are down up north and it's so bad that we could possibly have a emergency generation.
Well, how are you?
Up north? It's bad, I guess. Sounds like it.
There it is.
Oh, yeah, but you go ahead, I didn't know you were coming in here. No, I wasn't, but and I thought I went. Um, the state called me and told me about Crook County and how bad they are, they said it's like a war zone up there. And I know there's parts of Weston County without power.
Yeah.
Up north.
We have, I have no.
Okay, and then there's like Custer Highlands.
Yeah.
Parts without power. So I called Powder River and asked them if we had any down holes. And they says there's a lot of holes down and a lot of trees in the lines. They're going to try to get me a count this afternoon. So we're going to try probably within Weston and Crook, probably do a disaster declaration, so.
You're going to work out what county's get combined.
Yeah, and it'll probably just try to help Powder River pay for all that, but.
Do they have an estimate of when they think they'll have things going?
Or the power of the road, do they open back up?
They are. I heard somewhere, I don't know where, but.
I haven't got a report that they're open yet.
I think I think if somebody might just can tell me if they were able to get out to Custer Highlands.
So eighty-five to five eighty-five, so all these things, they'll have a report that it's open.
But it's, yeah, you get to Redview, it just turns nasty, which is typical.
And then towards Custer two also?
Yeah, breakneck out of foot, that's now.
Really?
When we left this morning and no power.
Yeah.
Did Custer itself? Did Custer itself get hammered?
I don't know.
I think they had zero visibility at Crazy Horse this morning.
So just kind of.
But then once you get to, it looks like once you get to Beulah, there's nothing. And once you get the other way to.
Sundance, Sundance and Beulah has no power. Well, I don't know how much snow Beulah has, but I know Sundance. Nope, no power, Sundance and Beulah have no power as of this morning, so.
But wind is so also a big factor.
Yeah, with your trees in the line and down power poles and and stuff, so that's affecting a lot of our residents as well. So I know there's down lines in Weston County, down down power poles, so. Will be, I'll be keeping track of that. I don't know when our residents will get anything.
Yeah, first hand experience of that.
Francis, they thank you for donating your power, so. They thank you for donating your power to them.
Kyle?
Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to have your time. My name is Kyle Boardger, I'm the executive director of Wild Help. Our official name is Goshen Help, we're a nonprofit, five oh one C three. Back in the sixties, President Johnson declared war on poverty and a grant was created within the federal government to give local entities, governments and counties and states the power to address poverty in the best way that they saw fit. That grant is now called a Community Services Block Grant. And your county has been receiving it for some time, whether you've been aware of it or not. In Wyoming, uh that grant is allocated based on a complicated formula using SNAP participants, poverty percentages, unemployment and so forth. And this past year, your CSG grant was about thirty-one thousand. And uh that's not a lot of money to really address the causes of poverty, but we're doing our best with it for you. Wild Help, actually, we serve six counties because when we started in Goshen County, the state came to us and asked us to administer this grant because nobody wanted it. And I soon discovered that the requirements of the grant were such that I had to raise as much money as the grant and able to oversee the grant. Because of the oversight requirements, it has a lot of reporting, it has oversight, we have to do audits and reviews. And because the federal government expects us to report whether we have success or not, and we wanna know that as well. We saw that by combining the six counties where everybody else was saying that they didn't want the grant, that if we combined that, we could cost share the administrative oversight and we could lower those cost expenses to each county, and that is what we've attempted to do. The challenge was, as soon as we did that, the pandemic hit. And the world is just now starting to feel a little bit more normal. And so I'm out back again, and trying to reestablish what we were going to start from the beginning. And that is that we want to establish within Weston County the foundations for creating sustainable families and a sustainable community. Some of that involves stabilization resources. If somebody is drowning, they gotta get out of the water in order to really be able to focus on the next step. So if somebody has no food, we wanna make sure that they have some food to eat. If they have no housing, we wanna try to make sure they have some housing. But that's not the end of it. I am not happy with helping somebody to stay to where they're not sustainable or they're not healthy. Our goal is to work with community partners, local government, churches, schools, to partner together to find what that greatest need is, work out a strategic plan with measurable outcomes, and then work together, combining our resources, identifying who's responsible for what, and then work towards creating that sustainable reality that we think can happen. And that's what this grant helps to start. It's not enough, but it's seed money. Our total budget for your county exceeds a hundred thousand because we've also combined in a grant from the state to develop a family resource center. And family resource centers are not based on income. Their primary focus is to help families to locate and to receive the resources they need to be sustainable, to be healthy, whether that's what childcare options are available, what classes for parenting might be available, what other resources they might have. One of the things that Wyoming discovered is that in our sparse populations, there's often a lack of knowledge of what resources might be available or how to receive them. And so our goal, working with the state, is to create that resource of knowing who does what, how they do it, what's required, and then where are the gaps? And how can we help to fill in the gaps? And how can we work with county and community partners to fill those gaps in a way that supports who you are? So, this is not meant to be my idea of a solution for you, but for me to build the foundation so that in Weston County, all of you working together, determine what Wild Help does for you. And so it's what I wanted to just communicate a little bit. You do have the packet, you can see some of the services we do provide. We do have rent support, we have utility support, we can help with transportation. We can help with food assistance. Those are that bottom layer part. A part of it is also building up opportunities for people to engage with us so we can build up that permission to help them take the next step. A part of it is building those community connections by giving them something to see that we are active, that we are engaged in your community, and to have those volunteer opportunities so that people can start to own us. We need you to own us so that we become part of you. Our office has been closed for about six months because we had a funding gap. That office, we just hired somebody, it'll be opening at the end of May. And we're gonna do our very best to be here from now on. But a part of the reason why we're here is that grant from the state, and it has an end date of September of twenty twenty-seven. So part of our long-term sustainability goal is to prove to the county and its citizens that our entity is valuable enough and we do enough good work in helping families to be sustainable that we can all work together to figure out how to make us to continue. Because a lot of those funds are either gonna have to come from different grants or from within the county. Just to give you an idea of what we did last year, I didn't give you this report, but I remembered it right as I was leaving my house. Uh, we, the Eat Rap program just ended. That program, over the course of its life, and we assisted with those applications, provided citizens within your county one million dollars. In addition to that, we provided an additional six thousand dollars in assistance. So, what we've discovered is, when we get a dollar, we can often multiply it by six times over. There were a multitude of grants that we could apply for on your behalf that are best suited for nonprofit to handle. But our greatest problem, just to make you aware of, my challenge right now is that almost every grant that is out there is reimbursable. And I do not have enough cash on hand to take on more grants. And so that is a part of our participating with you and your citizens is, if we want these grants, how can we help to support them? What can we raise funds for, what can we do to help make sure this is possible? Housing is one of those top priorities for every county. Figuring it out is a huge challenge, but there are grants available with a combination of private, private-public, but that's a lot of work involved. We can't do it on our own, you might be able to get help with it, but we can work together on it. And though there's, just some of the things, community action is so wide and broad, I hesitate to tell you, except to say that if there is something in your community that is impacted because of poverty, that is something we are allowed to address. The question is, where's the resource gonna come from and in what manner do we address it? Thank you.
Questions for the board?
I, I noticed on the structure of organization, um, resource coordinators, do we actually have a resource coordinator in Weston County?
They start on the thirteenth for training.
Okay.
And that's one of our challenges, has been finding competent staff. So sometimes having staffing is challenging, if you're business owners, you know that.
What, you know, I guess, what can we do as a board to help this succeed, you know? Sort of dumping a ton of money towards it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I, I think a part of it is, we're, we're really working on our communication. Now that the pandemic is over, we can focus on real things again. And we'll be holding some community meetings where we're trying to get everybody together on the same page. If this board identifies some of those main problems or indicators that needs assistance, we could partner together on trying to find those solutions and figuring some of that out. Uh, first off, maybe a little bit of funding, which would help if we could use it for leverage. Uh, sometimes we have to hold back on our grant spending because, uh, I mean, I've had the state slow pay. You don't experience that, do you? Well, my, my bank pocket is a little bit smaller, and so if, if I have three different grants coming out of the state and they're slow paid, then my funds start to dwindle pretty low. Because every single county I have, all of those grants are paying for our work there. And having a little bit more cash on hand would help us to cash flow better. To give you an example, this year, we are budgeting for eleven thousand dollars of local funds out of Weston County. And so, uh, we're hoping to either fundraise that or to have that come from other sources.
I got a question. Do you, um, help them? I know you've helped them with their, um, rent and all that kinda stuff. Do you also help them to try to get out of poverty? Like saying, going and trying to find a job or so they can get back on their own feet?
That's the ultimate goal. Unfortunately, during the middle of the pandemic, they were pushing so much out. There was very little you could do except to respond to the demand. But ultimately, the goals of community action is to enable people to help themselves and then to also help their neighbors. We don't want people to live in poverty, we want people to be good neighbors. We want them to be sustainable. We want them to be able to make their own decisions in a good way.
Ask them how many illegals in this country are getting part of this money.
How long have you guys been serving Weston County?
We started serving Weston County, uh, October twenty twenty.
Do you recall Weston, I don't recall giving monies to you guys to help any grants. Do you?
We don't.
We haven't requested before.
Okay, now I remember. How long do they stay in the program before they're?
So, a lot of our services at the moment have been one and done. And that has been a part of it, is the limitation of staff. When you only receive a little bit of money, you're unable to hire staff who have the training and capability to do more. That would be referring them into other systems to where they can gain more training. But our goal is to develop those processes. The longest I've had somebody stay in our program was about six months when we had sufficient funds. Uh, that was a father who had gotten pulled over and, uh, had his young son in his car, and there were drugs. So he got to spend some time in the county. We worked with the Department of Family Services and with that gentleman, we paid for rent and utilities. He went and got a job. And then what we did was, we helped him to get his classes and do everything that DFS was requiring. And then as he started making money, we graduated him off of the program down to the point to where he was on his own. Uh, a part for us is, sometimes people stay on government assistance because there's that hard cutoff. And they get to the point where they start doing well, and then they lose their resources and they see huge drop in their financial situation. So when we do help somebody long-term, we try to graduate them off so that they don't experience that drop-off and that we can make sure that they're self-sufficient and sustainable. But nobody's on forever.
I got just a kind of a thought here. You know, you say, you know, your reimbursement grant, so you can't go after because you don't have the money to front it. Would there be a, I mean, a way that, you know, every county could maybe throw in a couple thousand bucks? But it has to stay as a balance, basically that, you have to maintain that balance. So you pay those grants, you pay those bills, and when the grant comes back in, you bring that back up to that balance.
Right, right, leverage grants.
Would that, would that us help?
Huge. Uh, I mean, because there's some times where we discovered that maybe we weren't able to spend down a grant. Uh, I'll give you an example, this main grant, they did not have the contract written until October twenty-sixth. It starts October first. We got our first payment in November. And I'm trying to tell the state, you just artificially reduced the award to that county because the funds weren't available to us to spend. And so those are some of the arguments we're having with the state. But if we had those funds on hand, then it's easier for us to spend and then get reimbursed.
Are these grants a hundred percent reimbursable, are they ninety, ten, seventy-five, twenty-five?
They're a hundred percent. What I've done so far is, I've been talking to the state about doing prepayments, and I've gotten some of them.
Now, we, we as a county, we've had grant opportunities, but we don't have the matching funds to even go after some of them sometimes, so.
Right, and it might be to where we could partner together on it.
Well, just some thought, you know, if you had a leverage account like that.
Yeah.
Do you apply to counties for part of their one percent tax?
We are beginning that step. A, a part of it has been a learning curve because I'm from Goshen County and they don't have it. And so now I've become aware of it. We're trying to figure out what that process is. So for me, it's a learning curve.
Cause we're working on our budget and.
So if I can find out the information, I will apply.
So you just send a letter to the Board of County Commissioners, asking for funds of the one percent tax?
Maybe it's, we call it a provider service.
Yeah.
Deal, so. There could be some funds available there. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Let's kinda piggyback down with Stan asked, how do you, uh, how do you decide? What is your process to decide who gets help and who doesn't?
We have very strict statutes from the federal government that require that. Primarily on the CSBG grant, it's based on income. We have to do documentation regarding their income. Beyond that, we have some internal policies that we do in terms of ID or residency.
So you're saying that you're not gonna give any illegal invaders our money? Is that what you're trying to tell us? Because that's, I don't want my money.
What I would tell you is that if there is a federal statute that has allowance, a local entity can increase its policies. So far, our agency has a policy of, of having an ID and residency.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
No, I don't wanna sit here and bash people, but what about children? I mean, I don't care who you are, where you're from. You guys step up and help whoever it is.
Yeah.
This whole illegal stuff, that's fine, once you're eighteen years old.
Uh, our, our duty is to work with the local entities because if we don't have your support, then we can't serve you. And, uh, so that means reading the tea leaves, so to speak. But above all, it means helping people to get to where they need to be. Uh, the family resource centers have a strong focus on children because it's the Children's Trust Fund that is handling the process. And so there's a huge emphasis on making sure that we can identify children who might be in need, supporting their parents, who might need additional resources or support. Really, for us, it's a matter of prevention. If we can help children and our teens get a step out, then that saves us from having to take care of that adult, and it's cheaper. So we do have a lot of focus and goals on helping children and teens.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. The Weston County. The Weston County Health Officer position. Can I start that off?
Thank you.
Our Weston County Health Officer is still in Wyoming, still has a house here, but is not here full-time. She has submitted a letter that says she wants to stay in that position. I think it's a matter of opinion on, on that letter or what, you know, what we wanna do. But as a board, do we, what is the board's opinion on what we should do about it? Go ahead.
I don't have any issue with her filling in. I mean, as long as she is available to assist with that kinda stuff, the problem that's gonna happen is when she's not available in present in the county when there is a problem. So, I almost think that it behooves us to potentially look for a different candidate allowing this person to continue on that role. If there is a candidate that lives and resides in Weston County, then maybe we should look for who knows your.
Commissioner, I agree with you. Uh, I can tell you firsthand knowledge that Kristen works up at Mondale as a provider up there, and she does an amazing job. I spoke with her, just from my view, I spoke with her without concern. She has been available anytime. I think it would behoove us to maybe put, you know, something out there to have a backup and have her fill that position. I don't know if that's what you're saying, Commissioner, but, um, you know, let her stay in that position in the meantime. I, I don't see, I don't see it where, I've never been not able to get ahold of her. So, that, that's what I'll say about that, but it's up to the board.
You know, last time we went through this, we didn't have, uh, candidates knocking down our door to come in. You know, I would, I would like to see, you know, stay in correspondence with her, let her fill in until we can find somebody else, you know, not, so we're not without one. But, you know, let her be aware that, hey, we're looking for a full-time person here to do this, you know, to be that person, you know, and.
And she may be back, she said, so I don't, I don't know if that helps.
I don't even know if it warrants advertising. I don't even know if it warrants advertising. I mean, the general community is going to know, I would think, the health community.
Yeah.
And if somebody decided and it was local and they could then come in and plead their case, I mean, I don't want to run her off.
No, I don't either. I don't want to run, but I mean...
I do see why it'd be beneficial.
Yeah, if a situation comes up and she's not, I totally... Did you, you have something, Commissioner?
No.
Okay.
You know, I guess maybe just let her, let it stay as it is, you know, and if problems don't arise, we're okay. And then if problems start to arise, then we start pursuing it harder, you know? I don't want to run her off because she's done a good job for us.
Yeah, because I don't think we have had one thing come up since Dr. Jordy was in charge during COVID.
I mean, she's, the little things that's come up, she's right on top of them and good correspondence, you know, with everybody when something comes up. And we always get emails from her when things come up.
And that even, we were taking advice from the state. The state drew up the resolutions that we had to follow and then got them to Dr. Jordy and then...
And even when she wasn't our health officer, she was continuing to put input to us.
Dr. Jordy, every, every, every exception he made was denied. And after we let go of Dr. Jordy, every exception was approved. And that was through the state medical officer. And I agree, Krista hasn't, we haven't seen anything. And that's not a hit on Jordy, it's just, that's what reality in fact was. So what's the pleasure of the board? Just want to...
I think we just leave it as is and if, if we don't have problems arise, don't rock the boat. If we have problems arise, then we start looking.
I don't think we need a motion for that because she's in place, but...
Okay.
Uh, Extension Office Budget. Oh, sorry. Let's get that. Commissioner's College.
I have everyone that's had their votes needed in order to move forward.
Want to do an order?
Yeah.
One through whatever, one being your first topic.
And then total them up and lowest score wins. Do you want to look them up? They're here.
No, we just left them. I think I have the action. I have to fire you.
Okay. We still have all this.
Because it's always before this and these are different things.
But we're asking, are we part of the public comment?
Um, we need to add these in place of that. These two things. Or just these two things? And then you guys can sign all this and the long-term?
So I'll just put public comment after.
Six years of new business, supporting education.
That's how, and then you could add this after our extension office. And then you guys can sign all this.
It's a long time coming, isn't it?
Before we go to work.
Okay.
The bonus chapter.
It's funny, I'm looking at the cameras like it's Sundance, so there's Sundance, it's just horrible.
Yep. Pull up four corners.
Go up to Bueller area. Nothing.
I'd look at this corner.
Crazy.
Four corners, one camera looking towards this key.
Looked like this.
What's that?
Blanket for the list.
Is that my snow on that? They're right here.
Crazy.
Hey, Pam. Commissioner has his representative in the city on the dispatch board.
It's the chief.
It's the chief.
This is Brian. Hey, Francie. How are things going out there? They starting, you starting to get a handle and things coming around?
Yeah, we are. We're doing pretty good.
See if they ever use that racetrack around the...
Um, I think it's gonna, they're not gonna do any more mini sprints on a basis.
I mean, around the horse track.
The horse track.
Well, it's, oh, the horse track. Billy would like to see the Indian relay races to come in. So we're trying to get that to where they might be, they might come.
Yeah, half mile.
Because that'll be a, you know, a crowd eater. That's one of her Indian races. Haven't you ever seen it?
Indian relay races?
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, it's, there's some, there are some train wrecks deluxe. Google it.
Better look it up.
Just Google Indian relay races.
Yeah, Indian relay races. And he's, you know, that's one of Billy's, um, future things.
Then we built that racetrack. Couldn't touch the old half mile.
There's nothing, absolutely nothing.
Yule Creek, nothing.
Hey, Jamie.
Yeah, not really.
So the ceiling, we're going to see more of your...
Have you been over to there next?
I was on, I think I was in my shirt on that.
I thought you said the ceiling had been down.
Rain?
Must be.
I don't know, when I looked there, well, I didn't, I didn't notice, but maybe it did.
Well, those things have been pretty subtle.
Well, we have to have it. Well, it's nice.
Somebody said two and a half, somebody said three inches. They said three inches, did you?
We had three inches up in our house. And it was, when I left, it was snow and rain, just nice, not hard and heavy, just nice and steady.
Now it's supposed to be freezing, you know, it's too nice, all these trees and... Nobody apples.
Like any apple, I like the hair you got.
Hair you got. You can tell what the weather's been. Yeah.
Okay. So, and then I will let you guys know, um, are you going to do Newcastle again?
I, I can.
Okay, and then will you do Upton?
Is there an Upton more this year?
Yep. Okay, so, um, well, you guys selected two. Now, the three alternates are out of state, so I don't know how that'll work. I don't think, yeah, they can't. So the two from Newcastle receiving scholarships are J.J. Liv and Kate Tavigi. The one from Upton is Emma Gustoff. And then the alternates are Zach Orsborn and William Beestrom. Zade Orsborn got the renewal, so I will get that information to the schools. The 15th is when the awards are. 9:45 is Newcastle and 9 o'clock is Upton. I'll make the certificates and have those ready for you guys to present. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
This is...
Extension Office Dispatch.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
All right, Commissioner. Taylor, thank you. Vicky Hayman.
Erin Pershey.
We just wanted to come ahead of time. Summer gets really busy for us. We presented our recommendations. I know you're asking for, if we can, to cut our budget. It's really hard to cut when you have a growing program. We have made some adjustments. But as you'll look, we just wanted to let you know where we're headed, what we're thinking. We've decreased a couple smaller accounts. We would like to increase the secretary's training line item. It's clear over in Pinedale this year and she hasn't even been with us a year yet, so we still want to continue training with her. The copier is now an additional line item, so there again, it's hard to make cuts when you've got to increase by 1,800 to cover the copier. I did take 500 out of my travel. I'm trying to be more county-focused and so in essence, I reduced my line item there for my programming and travel. To put towards the copier is my intention to help with that line item. We also would like to increase our tier to the top tier for our support staff. And historically, we've always had the top tier, whatever that dollar amount was throughout the, the raises and whatnot for quite a few years. And then with all the things that have gone on and with the 15% increase that was given or whatever that exact amount was, it's gotten changed over the last few years, so I'm looking to get that back where it originally was. So those are the major things. Erin's program's really growing and I'll let you, let her talk to you. It's just hard to cut from her budget.
And the other exciting piece is, is so we have an AmeriCorps Vista Volunteer that was supposed to start next Monday. There's some hangups through the UW system, so it'll probably be another week or 10 days after that before she gets started. So the nice part about that is we'll have 675 hours that's completely funded through grant funding through university. So she's going to work on projects at our office. So like, we're super excited because that means we have 675 more man-hours in our office that isn't costing us anything other than, you know, the cost of supplies and copies and that kind of stuff. And just looking at the budget, we operate real close to exactly what's already there, so it's hard to take away from that. And then the exciting part is, is right now, and I brought my little May highlights, we're up to 192 for each kids in Weston County, which is 24, I believe. I think we were at 168 last year. So 24 more than where we were at this point last year, which is really exciting. And I feel like all of the kids that are enrolled, for the most part, are actively enrolled, like they're actively participating in some piece of the program. So we are impacting almost 200 kids. And when I look at my, you know, my line items, that $2,000 for program support pencils out to about $10 a kid. So there's not much wiggle room, hopefully, there that you guys will agree with me that that support. And the nice thing is, is I'm pulling in funding from other places. We have some really awesome support. And my long-term goal is to figure out what that funding fundraiser for Weston County 4H is. I just feel like we're another year or so out from that of building those relationships with my 4H members and families to have that buy-in and then to find that event that becomes the annual event that hopefully then funds a lot of the extra pieces of that. So that's kind of where I'm at and obviously, you guys all know, travel hasn't gotten any cheaper for the, and isn't going to. So that's, we kind of left those line items just where they were, hoping that you guys would see that we're, we're making great progress and we're having lots of fun doing it along the way. So that's kind of where we're at there. But the AmeriCorps Vista Volunteers is really exciting. So the projects that we've kind of outlined that they're going to work on is we're going to partner with Caleb Carter at NRCS. And Emily is going to work on promoting the community gardens and the farmer's market and tying in promotion of extension. So how that fits, the classes that Vicky teaches with food preservation and the community vitality and how all of those pieces kind of play together. And then just promoting what we're doing at the Extension Office at the farmer's market because that's maybe an audience that we're maybe not reaching as well or a whole new piece to recruit from. And then she's going to help with a lot of the 4H stuff this summer as I am on maternity leave, well sooner than we had planned. But, so just helping fill in some of those gaps while I'm just working a day-ish a week all summer getting ready for fair and that and enjoying the new little peanut at our house. So any questions for us about what we chose to submit for the budget? Because we're happy to answer any of that.
Well, first, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Budget is never a fun time as, as you talk on the phone. My one que, actually, I have two questions. Everybody comes in and says they can't, we just can't do without, we can't do less. And I get that. It's important. And especially 4H, I'm super proud myself, I'm sure the commissioners on how many people you have in that program. And it's just, it's amazing. If, one wish list, if there's one thing that you could just absolutely have to have and you want it, what would it be?
And I get, to keep or to?
No. A wish list.
Wish list.
If I had a perfect life, I would want this for this program. I'm just curious.
I think, in all honesty, more funding just to offer more, you know, more programs because the more financial support we have, the more that I can do and offer and bring in. And, and the great piece is, is like we've, we're seeing the community support. I've had, we, the John Button Memorial came to 4H to do some awesome things and we bought some muzzleloader supplies. And there's a new member at the gun club who is excited with what we're doing and brought me in a check for $600 because we needed another muzzleloader. So like, I feel like we're doing the right things and we're pulling, we're starting to, I feel like that momentum is there and we're just kind of rolling along and, and I think the more of that we do and the more kids we reach and the more cap, you know, community sees the benefit, the more of that, that's going to happen, that, you know, they continue to support us and whether it's supporting a really cool fundraiser or just continuing to support. And our community does a great job. I just pulled up the list for like our fair award and we have $7,500 that has come in as of today to support county fair awards for 4H and FFA, which, like you pull that number and you run the total at the end and it's just amazing how much our community stands behind what we're doing with these kids. And then they'll show up again, you know, the night of the sale and spend money and...
So, and these are my own notes, like I said. The other question is, if there was one item that, I realize you said you can't use anything, but there, if there was one item that was cut, that you, what could you do without? And I say cut, not eliminated. I just want to know for my own notes.
You know, and that's looking at, right now, on our supply line item, we're at $1,385 or $1,395 spent as of today. You know, with a couple of months still to go on the supplies, so that, it's just a hard one to... It's just a hard one to... I don't know where we cut. That's, that was kind of the discussion.
Your input's important, and that's why I'm asking. I mean, if there was something that had to be cut, I'd rather have it by choice than, we pick something that's not in your, you know, you're like, "Oh, why did we do that?" So I'm just asking.
As far as travel goes, I'm, I'm more flexible right now than Erin. Just because, at this point, extension direction has been to be more county-focused for us area educators, which is what I do. And so I have been trying really hard to rein that down and rein that in. So, I mean, but in my line item, it just says educator slash travel. So that is my programming and my travel. My programming does not get broken out like Erin's has been in the past. I mean, I probably could go down a little more. It's just, you know, you say more to...
And I'm not saying we will.
To go, right, yeah.
Your input.
But I probably have a little bit more leeway. Where Erin, I really like to see the kids be invested and working with the youth. So I really, I think it's important that she keeps up going around the state with the youth and getting to Upton as much as she does. And I'm still going to Upton, so we're hitting the county pretty good between the two of us. But I don't need to go to a national meeting every single year, which, you know... So those kind of things, I could possibly back down a little bit, but we are, you know, communications, we're pretty much tied with our phone and our internet usage. Supplies, we could maybe come down a little bit. But it is, it's tough. We need our copier. I mean, I use that as much as anything.
I wanted to know, so you're fine.
Okay.
You don't have to go down the list. That's one item. You absolutely did not, and absolutely won that you did, so. Any other? Go ahead.
On there, Vicky, on your, your travel, that doesn't, that doesn't reflect what we helped you, going back to get your word last year, does it?
No.
Okay. I wanted to just verify that, that that wasn't in there.
No, that is not in there.
I really appreciate how the program is growing. It's growing slow. You all know, slow steady growth is the best, instead of having a spurt. So I just want to commend you on how the 4-H program is going.
Thank you. It's been a lot of fun these last two years. It's one of those that, this last week, it's like, okay, so how do I juggle the ball of keeping everything after being gone for three weeks, kind of on a little earlier than planned? My shooting sports leaders last night, I was like, "So, since I kind of disappeared and said, 'Good luck, here we go.'" And that is, that's a really fun piece of it, is I have a set of volunteers in place that even when I have to step away, kind of unexpectedly, earlier than planned, I know that things are going, and that's the best way. That it's not all just dependent upon what I'm sitting doing in the office. It's, I have a great network of volunteers doing phenomenal things with the kids, so it's fun when it works the way it's supposed to.
And if you have more questions as you get closer, we know we're early in knowing all the monies and everything, but, yep, just please reach out. We'll, we'll come back, whatever we can do to help make this transition, if we have to easier.
And Dons, where he was hitting on is, that's, those are the things that I, when we... You are early, and maybe that's the reason to come in early, just say, you know, if there's something that you could cut ten percent, just think about it, and you got a month.
Yeah. Yeah.
No reason to have you on the line today to say, "This is what we're going to do."
Right. But we just thought, you know, it'd be easier to come up ahead of time, share with you where we're at, what we're thinking, and we know you'll have probably more specifics for us.
And I think the board wants you to be a part of the process, not feel like you're just left out.
Yes.
Yeah, which we really appreciate, because we, yeah. Having grown up in Iber County and done this there, like, I get being in the counties that have no money, like, we're very good at the, you know, using little to get a lot out of it, so... But, and that's, so I brought just a fun little highlight, and I, I mean, other than... May is pretty quiet in the 4-H world, purposely this year, because I thought I was having a baby in May, not in April, so we did some of that. Here, Becky, let me grab you. But our shooting sports, we wrap up archery on Sunday, so Sunday morning, if you guys would like to sneak out to the fairgrounds to the indoor arena, they're going to shoot the three-D archery, county shoots, at nine and ten. It's a lot of fun to go watch. The kids have worked really hard the last few weeks. We did have the leader training here the end of March, and we had, I think, five counties represented, but we had seven of our leaders get certified across different disciplines. So that was really exciting. Upcoming from that, we're still shooting shotgun and muzzleloader as the weather allows. Our county awards banquet will be on the night of June seventeenth. State shoot is the seventh, eighth through the eleventh, that weekend, that second weekend in July in Douglas, and we actually have two of our 4-Hers that qualified for the National 4-H Shoot in Grand Island in the last week of June. So Tevin White, no, yeah. Now that I said Trevin. Crap, now I can't tell you which one. Tevin or Trevin. And Samuel Ferguson are headed to Grand Island to represent Wyoming as part of the Wyoming team for a National 4-H Shoot, so that's really exciting. In May, we'll get ready for the sheep goat and swine weigh-ins the last Tuesday, so I believe that's the twenty-eighth. We're planning for 4-H camp. Kiddles will head to Showcase Showdown in Laramie. And just working on county fair. It's gonna, we're going to blink, and it's going to be here in not very long. And then just some really fun pictures of all of our 4-H clubs doing really great things. We had a club go to Jump Craze is one of their fun activities. Some pictures of the clover buds doing really fun things. A club hosted a family movie night at the fairgrounds a couple of weeks ago. The Borderline, or no, Oak Mountain Outlaws did a highway cleanup, and had the most kids that they've ever had show up to help that date, so that was really exciting. They've been doing lots of really fun fair project, projects at their club meetings, and then just archery pictures on the front page. So lots of really cool stuff that's happened the last few weeks, and just lots of really fun things, and then we'll gear up, and June and July will be really full of activities, so... Fair schedule is pretty well set for all the 4-H stuff, and I believe, oh, Francie ducked out. But I think even county fair-wise, of all that is coming along really well, so we're excited.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. Yep, thank you guys very much.
Little one doing fine?
She's cute.
Yep, so we're gaining weight and growing, and she's a itty-bitty, she was six pounds, four ounces, so like two-thirds of Hadley, so, but, yeah.
We had a five and a half pounder that was early, and he's six-three.
Yeah.
So they grow.
I think she'll grow like crazy once we get going.
We're good.
It's just crazy to think that she'll be a month old instead of a week old, so. Thank you, guys. Have a great rest of the day.
So public comment, Commissioner's comment will go at the end of two-thirty. That was put there. I'm not sure.
Two-forty.
Two-forty, yeah. So we're going to finish up the consent and item gen paperwork, and then we'll dismiss for what?
So we're going to add audit findings and representation letter that Paul, because he gave to us, and it was not in the paperwork, so...
Do we need to amend the agenda?
Um, if we'll just, we'll add the audit findings and representation letter. We can add it under new business for the chair.
That could be just to carry over, audit review.
Unless we add it to the con... Oh, yeah, we can put it under audit review.
Just just a curation of the audit review.
Yeah.
It was part of his review.
But I'll just add it to this pile of stuff for you guys to sign right now before lunch. So this, a lot of it is just for you. Here.
Yes.
Don't forget to sign it.
I caught the, I caught it.
No, don't forget to sign it when it comes by you.
I caught the language, so we're going to sign.
No, there's two copies. One will stay with us, but that is just for you.
Right, I just let him look at it.
Okay. Five-eighty-five and eighty-five are now open both directions.
Nice.
Yeah.
I'm supposed to imagine, it's almost like I'm just running back here. This one?
Yeah. Is there any signs?
You gotta, you gotta check them.
I don't sign anything.
I think she just likes picking on me.
So is this letter for next year's audit? So, I would like to talk about that, because I feel like we should get a different auditor. I'm not sure why we should just keep... He does a good job, but it, you know, it's, it's a matter to me of checks and balances, and, well, as you can see, it's very important to have the same auditor, because he has all of our information. And we work, I will bring the other department heads in here, we work with him almost on a daily basis. We're calling him. We're the ones that work with him. The board only sees him once a year.
But if you, if you work with him on a daily basis, then I think that's kind of almost a detriment to the audit.
It's not. He, an auditor works close with you. I don't know, I don't know, I can bring Suzie in here, and, I mean... I guess you don't understand what you're...
To me, an auditor is someone who has to, needs to have an, it's an outside opinion who has no bias whatsoever towards what's going on, and, you know, and when you have someone you've used year after year after year and built these friendships, to me, then there is a bias. That's my opinion.
I, all adding on that is, our solid waste district has been using Riley and Associates since we started doing our audits, and it's very nice having our audit tying right in with the counties, and believe me, our district is not one to look anywhere else, because we've got such a good working relationship with them. They understand where we're at. They're familiar with us. All their other entities in the county that use them. I, I'm extremely happy, because I was here when we had other auditors, and frankly, the audit process was a nightmare coming into this. These audits are going so smooth, and, I mean, Paul makes no bones about it. If there's a discrepancy, he brings it up to us, no matter what entity it's in. I mean, that's his job, so I'm very satisfied. It's our auditing company.
I don't think it's appropriate to be discussing it right now. It's not on the agenda, and...
It's not on...
If you want to discuss replacing the auditor, let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
So why is it that you, what is it that you don't like about him?
There's nothing about him that I don't like. I just feel like sometimes you should audit the auditor.
So, he, they audit several, and I spoke with the other clerks, and you want to keep the same auditor, and it's very hard to get auditors that work well with counties and know how counties work. We have millions and millions of dollars of federal grants, and if you get an auditor in here that knows nothing about these grants, that's going to be bad for us who work on these grants. And what if something comes across that, some, some slip-up? I mean, there, there was already one in there for our treasure. Luckily, it wasn't something big. But there's things that we do all the time that, I mean, right now, we have one that's two-point-some million dollars. We're getting large grants. We need to have people that know how our counties work.
So I want to say something too. Becky, I agree with you that we need to work with familiar resources and auditors, but I hope, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, you're saying is that if I work at a place for twenty years, and I look, come in and look at a wall, and it gets to the point where you don't see everything on the wall, somebody else could come in and say, "What's that?", and you go, "I didn't even notice that. I've looked at that same wall for twenty years, thirty years. I don't know that she's saying, 'Fire the auditor.' I think what she's saying is, is that she, if I'm wrong, at some point, we need to have an, another auditor anyway on standby, I would think, but an independent auditor checking that." So I don't, I, I see the points on both sides, but complacency is very easy, easy things happen. It happens to me. I don't know if, I mean, I'm assuming it happens to the rest of you. If you say it, then you see things differently when you walk into a room for the first time than you would if you'd been in that room for twenty years. And I think that's what she's saying. I don't know, but that's how I see it.
Essentially, that's what I'm saying, that it, there's, yes, there's definitely pluses to having the same people and having these continuing records. However, that's, that's how things are missed sometimes, the complacency and continuation of doing things the same way over and over again, where someone else might come in and do things different, and you may not like it, but we might get a whole different view.
But I think you can add it to another agenda, as Commissioner Todd said, and talk about it. We're not there yet. It doesn't, just because you signed the contract, doesn't mean we can't have an independent auditor at some point to come in.
I just, I just wasn't comfortable signing it right away.
Paul's not our only auditor. He brings a group of auditors in here, and they fill this room. And he may, and when he comes back, he may have one or two of the ones that he had the year before. There's always a different set of eyes. It's not just his eyes alone. There's a whole set of eyes going over this stuff, so it's not just the same set of eyes looking at it.
And I agree with you. I, I don't disagree. I would, I mean, I hate saying it in a sarcastic way, but there's a whole lot of eyes going over, or should have been going over, the fair taxes too, but it was missed. So that's all I think she's saying. I don't, I don't disagree with Becky or her in that sense.
So is there a contract that's being circulated right now?
Yes, right here.
So I guess my thought is, is if there is a contract, you guys have questions about it, whether you want to renew or do something different. It sounds like maybe a whole box, I don't know if there's a deadline on the contract to sign, but maybe you could have gone as an agenda item on your, on your next meetings, you guys can discuss it, and then go from there, whether you sign that, or...
And that, that'd be up to, if the board wants to do that, that's fine.
I don't know. Do we have to have our letters of engagement signed with our auditors by a certain date?
Might go on there.
You know?
Is the date for the next meeting?
Otherwise, we are out of clients.
I don't think...
Go ahead.
Continue this conversation. I think that's response to... The gentleman that comes here is the face of the audit team that looks over everything. I mean, it's not Paul Stiles doing it on his own. I have to deal with him, verify their professionalism, I'm sure.
Yeah, he seems very professional. I just, you know, to me, I compare it to, it's a little bit lighter, I guess, to, you take your taxes to the, your accountant for your... you take your taxes to the, your accountant for your business and you get a certain amount of refund or you have to pay in and you take it to a different accountant that has just as many qualifications and they say, "Well, you should have done this" or "You could have done that," so I definitely see the point. Are we still allowing the Commissioner to comment? No, we're not, we're moving that to the end, it just got misplaced there.
If you found it there, don't sign.
And it's got three anyway.
We can put, I know you're here and you're going by the schedule, but normally that's at the end, somehow it got put in there, so it's hard to public comment when we haven't got to all the issues yet, but if you have something to say.
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to say that last week at the hospital board meeting, I don't know if you're all aware of what happened at the board meeting, but I did reference a state statute, 18-8-104, section E. It's about the commissioners are able to remove a board member. And I was told by their attorney that it did not, that it did not fall under hospital districts. So after reading Article 4 in 35-2, 401, it only talks about dissolving a district. I talked with the AG's office yesterday and at, they said that it's at the discretion of the county attorney if he wants to back the board on, or the county commissioners on removing anyone from the board. I talked to Stolten briefly before Jim ran upstairs to report, he said he was gonna look into it, but he discussed that with you guys. So it's kind of, the seed is there.
So you're...
So if there's any issues down the line, that is something that can be looked at.
I did, I noticed the, the comment that their attorney had made saying that that wasn't particular to the districts. I would be interested in knowing what she's speaking on. Was there statute she's reflecting?
She was reflecting on what I read to her, 18-8-104, section E. In order, it's 18-8-104E, it's on page 178 to help you find it quicker. It, I have it up on my phone. It says, what I read at that meeting was that, under section E, the county commissioners may remove any member of the board of trustees for just cause without a public hearing unless the trustee requests a public hearing. Vacancies on the board of trustees shall be filled by the county commissioners for the balance of the unexpired term created by vacancy. And Allison, I don't know her last name, who was the attorney for the hospital via phone, said that did not apply or that it'd be in the hospital district. So statute 35-401 is in regards to hospital districts and when I read through that, all it talked about was dissolving a district. So I called down to the state, they referred me to the AG's office and when I spoke with the AG's office, they said that it would actually go back to your county attorney and the county attorney would be the one that would back the county commissioners on following 18-8-104E.
Give me the statute from 35, what, someone was talking, I couldn't hear.
35-2-401 is the, is Article 4, it's about hospital districts. But when I spoke with that AG's office and said, "I read through that whole statute and it was just about how to dissolve a hospital district, but nothing about board," they said that it does go back to that 18-8-104E as long as the county attorney will back the commissioners on it, so.
And that was there too, they were talking about the districts and special districts and so there was, there were some lines there, but...
Yeah, there's some differences. I mean, some, some places have hospitals that are run by a county. Some have a hospital district where they created and so, just kind of, just really looking quickly at the 18-8-104, 5 section it gave, I mean, it would really depend on whether that applies to the district or to a, just a county-run hospital piece and so my guess is, like Allison, Allison G is her name, was talking, I mean, I have, there's no definition in this section by, from 18-8. Because sometimes they'll say what, you know, what the definition of, of a member, a member of the board of trustees and whether that applies or not. So I'd have to look a little bit more closely, but there probably is a distinction between whether it's a county-run hospital and whether you can remove versus a district and whether you can remove and so, yeah.
Yeah, and so the AG said that it would just, it would be back to the county commissioners with support of their county attorney.
And that probably means you just have to see if the attorney agrees that you can in fact file in those 18-8-104 to remove. And, you know, my guess is it would just be an opinion to them to say what you could or not. My off the cuff comment would be is because it's a district, there probably isn't the ability by the commission to remove those. It's an election piece where they get elected to their term. Unless there's, you know, if there's some kind of a criminal act or something like that, there's ways you can remove people in office for criminal acts or malfeasance and that's a separate process upon which you file it to a district court or sometimes to a governor. Have to go remove, but my off the cuff thought would be, without looking much further, would be if it's a district, there's probably not the ability for the county commission to remove those members absent some kind of criminal act or something like that. But I mean, I need a little bit more into it.
Yeah, that's what county attorneys spoken, so, I mean, the information I got was basically that it can come back to those who have come to us, so. But I can give you the name of the person I've concerned with, but that's all I wanted to kind of...
Thank you for researching that. Okay, we're gonna go on recess until 1 o'clock. So the mayor nurse get canceled?
And it would have been interesting to see how many votes may have changed because of Gordon's actions, because of the response of their communities after those bills were passed, specifically the gun-free zone bill. I think that, I think that we would have very much seen a change in votes on that one. I think you would have seen more nay votes on that than you had before.
Are, so you're saying that, that some folks were counting on the governor veto in that one?
I very much 100% think that especially school districts, courthouses, places like that were banking that the governor was gonna go, "No way are we letting guns in these areas." And I think that their response afterwards may or may not have swayed some of those representatives and senators to vote a different way because the response was strong.
Welcome back from lunch, we roll right into Crip discussion. Hello, sir.
Mr. Chair, how are you?
Good.
This, we're all here?
Ed should, I don't know if he came over with you guys.
I think he must have went to vote.
Do you want me to hold off?
No, it's totally up to you, you tell me.
His stuff is still here.
You okay? Okay. I don't want to leave him out, so.
It must have taken you guys 30 minutes, huh?
About.
Are you kidding me?
No, it was about 30 minutes.
It was a long line.
He's got an absentee.
I'm sure he knows, but it's a one, so I...
All right, we'll continue.
And we got an hour, right, scheduled?
Yes.
I'll start.
Go ahead.
So I screwed up in reading the agreement stuff and lack of not reading some of it apparently. I thought those box were included in some of that.
Yeah, I saw that in the article.
Yeah. So I guess, I, I think that's where we're at, is if we're gonna proceed with doing that road and especially if we're gonna repave over that one section. I mean, are we fools to not address these issues too?
You know, first I ask, we are still formal commission meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, so that's how, Mr. Chair, I'll address it, right? So, those boxes would have been included in that $4 million estimate on that last agreement, okay? Because that's a total reconstruction, so that's when we include whether it's pipe work, boxes, bridges, whatever, you know, and that's a, a very, from the hip estimate, based off the square yardage on reconstruction, okay? So that, those would have been included in that 4 million.
There's lots where we go.
Okay? Now, scaling it back to whether it's the original agreement scope, which was to pave the first mile, come from the disan, from the town inn to greenhouse and then just gravel FDR from there on, the next 2.2 miles back to the highway. You know, that was with now the pipe work, right? And, or box work and that was around a million bucks back then, like I said before. So now, I guess, I guess why, we just need to know what you want to do. If you want to include all the pipe and the boxes and make it a gravel road or go back to the original paving a mile and a gravel road, that's what we need to nail down to do another amendment to this agreement. And I can tell you, and these guys will back me up on it, which I should have stated Isaac Finkel, our district construction engineer, and Josh Johnson, resident engineer in Gillette, but helping out in Newcastle, since we don't have a resident engineer. If we want to do those boxes or any pipe work with whatever other scope you wanted and obviously that's going to add cost to it. And how much you want, how many, I know Jim handed me a list of pipe or I handed us a list, how much of those you want to prioritize and do? We need to know from you folks.
Commissioner Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, because we were doing that and Jim as well. I thought originally when we talked about the agreement, that, Jim, you, you were, we were talking about letting Jim fix some of those culverts. I don't know if I remember that correctly or not, but I agree with, if we don't fix those culverts, even if you put gravel down and those type of things, it's gonna, it's gonna decay the road quicker, wouldn't you agree? I mean, it's gonna, those, they're, they're heaved and they're up and, you know, I think it's almost a, we need, my opinion is we almost need to fix those in order to ensure the, the length of time that road lasts. What's your opinion?
Sure, you know, any, any infrastructure you have out there that's failing, Mr. Chair, and in need of repair, that's always gonna affect your surface above that, you know?
But, yeah, my incorrect, didn't we talk about you doing some of that? I guess I don't remember that, but... Yeah, it's been a while.
I almost think we did, but I think it was outside the scope of the Crip project.
Okay.
I think it was maybe try to repair a couple of them.
And, and I would agree with that, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Todd, that doing those, any pipe work would have been outside that original scope, which is only a million dollar project, roughly. So, and then, and then it was decided to go, well, let's do full-blown reconstruction and pave it, which then, that would include everything. Drainages, you know, structures. So, if we want to do something in between, just let us know, so these guys can do their thing and there'll be, either be a recon inspection or a scoping meeting, okay? The scoping meeting's for minor, not, not real big scopes, you know, but it could lead to recon for redoing boxes, right? And that's when you would be there, or whoever else, and speak for the county and saying, "Okay, this is what we want in this job, okay?" And then that gives our designers and our field folks to go back and nail down an estimate to put in, well, excuse me, to move forward with the job. Before that, the final agreement would be done also, which is an estimate on that back sheet, okay? I hope I didn't, not going right over there.
I know we've, we've discussed this quite a bit, Scott, on the, it seems like things have gotten shifted around and what sections of the road are we talking about? Currently, you said the, the million dollar, pre-discussed or predetermined is going to be, that was from greenhouse on over to the South 85 over the bridge, correct? Is that, that's what you mentioned with that, that million dollar project? Is that what you're talking about? Because the Crip, the Crip is, is encompassing this whole portion, correct? But we're just breaking it down into subsections like from greenhouse to 85 and greenhouse back up to the church.
And I think the original agreement was to pave from city limits to greenhouse and then do the FDR from greenhouse to...
Right, and that's, that's what it looked like on the, the website also.
Isaac, you were getting ready to speak up there, I think.
Yeah, that'd be correct.
That was the plan, just that first mile of paving.
I have a copy of the original agreement, I'll make it.
Okay. And it, Mr. Chair does say right in there on the front page, those, those details that you just said, you know, from where to where, we're gonna do this to this.
A question that I have is from, are the culverts incorporated from greenhouse to the intersection by the church? Because that's going to be the considered paved section.
As I recall, Mr. Chair, that there was no pipe work in that original scope. And if there was, it's not in that agreement, okay?
And see, what, either, either way, I think if we do FDR or we do a section paved or FDR, I think either way that it's crucial to get those culverts repaired.
Yeah, I think you'd have some pretty upset people if you spend money, put your money, you're gonna have to go back out there.
Cost long jeopardy, you know? So, go ahead.
The threshold on, if we increase the scope of the work to include, say, $500,000 worth of culverts, what does that do to our total Crip process, I guess in general? I mean, we're then say the original number but still held at a million dollars and it costs an additional $500,000 to, I mean, we're still on the hook for what percent of that and then you are still only going after a total of 3 million gifted by the state, or given down by the state every year. So, that 1.5 million comes out of that 3 million. This could put, this puts us down the road another three years potentially, do you think?
Not if we act now. Right now, it's in 27, I believe, or 28. 2028, the project is planned for. That gives us enough time, if we get this agreement nailed down now, we, we should be able to maintain the schedule.
Those people were asking when it was gonna happen, I thought maybe next year, but I still don't...
Isaac's the keeper of that schedule and knows that, right off the top of his head.
The bridge, the bridge grows for the next year.
The bridge is next year.
Yeah, the bridge is next year and then if you're 27 or 28, I can't remember exactly.
So, if it's, I forget the percentage on, on the project, if we trade that highway, 451, is it 10% of the total cost? Say that project ends up being 1.5 million, just even a need to know. Is that 150 out of the county coffers that we, we need to come up with out of county road fund or something? Is that how that, this works? Am I still under that? Is that correct?
Well, that would be applied to old Highway 85 for that project, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, let's not confuse it with doing the trade with Highway 451.
They're all kind of...
They are, but, but funding for Highway 451 would be 100% in the future.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about 1 and 1/2 million out here.
Right.
If that's what this project ends up costing, what percentage of that ends up falling on the county?
Oh, roughly 10.
Okay.
Isn't it, the bros, it's a little, 9, 10?
Bros is 9, 10, Crip's a little different. Crip used to be 85, 15, but I think they changed that, dropped that 15 down, you know? So, it definitely ain't gonna be more than 50%.
Yeah, as far as 451, it's our...
That's right.
And that's up to 3 million, correct? Then we're at 100%.
And then after, if there's any overmatch, then there would be, if like, if the job, well, that, the old agreement, the, the most recent agreement, it was total cost of $4 million, right? So, overmatch was a hun, was a million for the county.
Then we were gonna have to come back with...
Right.
So what do we want to do?
I mean, I, I guess this is a question for the board, I would encourage some conversation on it, but do we want to stick with the highway or pavement from town to greenhouse and FDR and there to 85, new 85 and then fix these culverts? Just add that on to it and then let these guys, gentlemen, proceed with it or do we want to change the whole threshold now because we got with their ideology? I don't know, that's, was the purpose of my email, was just trying to give everybody the information that I had and what we're fixing.
What I'm, what I'm noticing here too, Nathan, is on the... What I'm, what I'm noticing here too, Nathan, is on the, discovering what the engineering fees it's obvious that we're gonna do something because for us to do nothing is gonna cost us more than to do the project, something like.
Yeah, if we cancel the project now, uh, Mr. Chair, then of course, West County's on the hook for any preliminary costs accrued thus far, or 100% of that, so, yeah.
And I think we're at like 30,000, roughly.
Yeah, it was about 28,000. So, which is not much, you know, not much has been done.
But we throw it away, it'd be thrown on a quarter.
Right, yeah.
Fifth project away.
You've heard, we talked about it before at our annual step presentations. These are great programs, you know, that are afforded out there for the local agencies, you know, because we had a lot done with, uh, you know, only having to match the 10 to 15% or sometimes 20, depending on what it is, you know? And there's a lot of counties and towns that utilize these programs. You get some good quality work out there, highway, you know, major highway work for 10%. So, we, we are very, we're advocates of the programs and definitely want our local agencies to utilize it and, uh, be good partners, build, have those relationships, you know, so.
If you look at the back part of that packet that I handed out, the original county matched portions, 94,000. Yours got.
What, and where are we at now approximately? Now it would be. With the increases.
Mr. Chair, all I can guarantee you is whatever scope you do pick and how much pipe work and this and that, it's gonna be somewhere between that first agreement and that last one. I don't know.
Scott, I'm about, I, I've gone back and forth on this because FDR's a great product. I understand that, I've seen them grow. But I also said, is there ever gonna be a good time with the way finances are?
Right.
To, to pave a road, you know? And, and where you get 30 years out of a paving and you have the FDR, which is cheaper, but you still have pitting and you still have flating the road because of some snow and you still have those things and there's gonna be maintenance involved in that too. Are we being in the long-term picture penny wise and dollar foolish? And it's not because I'm like a brainchild here, I'm just sitting here going, maybe, maybe we bite the bullet and we do it and it, that road is done. Uh, and for a, a long, long time with minimal maintenance. I mean, you have to do chip sealing and those type of things, but I don't know. Um, I've, I've, I've talked to, I've talked to you, Nathan, about it. I just don't know what the right answer is. I mean, it's a big project, but that's, that's a, paving and doing the boxes and, and doing that road right is a long-term fix to me that I think, you know, may save us money in the long run, I don't know.
Yeah, the, uh, Mr. Chair, those are all, uh, options to weigh, you know, and what, and what, how much maintenance you want to put into, how much risk there is, you know? You know, you think about across the state and well, just say across this district that we know well, there isn't too many county paved, county roads that are paved. So, um, counties maintain their county roads and they have their own budgets and priorities and go from there, you know? So that's, that's really not like, you know?
I do think either way, FDR or paving, we have to fix those boxes, that's my opinion. We're wasting time. Go ahead.
I think the biggest thing takeaway here though is, is if we were to stuck with the original agreement, the, the million to the $100,000 variant is we are then over the $3 million threshold. And then it, so we're at 4 million, potentially at four and a half million come three years from now. It's a, a benchmark, I guess, that we have to decide of how much money are we willing to puke up to pay for a project? Do we want to find potentially a hundred million and a half dollars? Or do we want to hopefully just find a couple hundred thousand dollars? To get maybe something that's not as beautiful as a paved road the whole way, but.
Absolutely. Obviously, we don't, the time is still a factor here for getting the project done on time. If there's any other research that has to be done on it, so what's the pleasure of the board?
If I may suggest one thing, Mr. Chair, I think, you know, you got Jim sitting here, he's got this list, you know, and everybody drives it and has their opinions, but he knows the exact condition of those, right? And, uh, he can prioritize how much money you want to spend on pipe work and being the public first guy here, you know, and then go from there. Which ones are, should be replaced, which ones are dire need, whatever, you know? And that, that, and then him working with these guys back here to get that done, right?
Totally.
I guess, you know, if you want to decide to go to repay, I would definitely replace all your product. To me, that's foolish to go and repay something and have a little product on there, but.
How many of these are, are under the FDR, would you guess, Chair?
You mean if we went from greenhouse out? I would know if I had my USC somewhere off, I could probably, probably close to half, I would say.
The ones that everybody's having so much trouble with, are they, they're, they're under the pavement, right?
Yeah. They're between the pizza barn and city limits, that's where those two big concrete boats, culverts are. That's where it's heaving.
So is there a possibility we could use?
No, go ahead.
Is there a possibility we could use Jim's discretion to, with these gentlemen to go out there? I mean, I'm not saying, just throwing this out there, but let's, even, even the ones that need to be replaced under the FDR, let's add them to the list. I mean, I see a couple of them, you have good condition, so, but at minimum, replace the ones under the pavement. And anything that's bad and needs replaced under the FDR, get it done within the scope of this project. Does that sound like a terrible idea?
No, uh, Mr. Chair, you know, and it, and whatever you decide what the design should be, and as our subsequent plan reviews come out, which we have four, five, six, depending, you know, whether it's preliminary plans and grading plans and then right away utility, so on, okay? If, and generally, there's estimates come out for those plan sets, right? If all of a sudden costs or estimates are getting out of whack and you're seeing that, or you're getting too much, let's say, then you start prioritizing, okay, maybe this pipe isn't as critical. Maybe that one, and then you can start scaling back or cutting, right, in that design? Working with these guys and our designers in Cheyenne, so that's something to consider, you know? Put, maybe put them all in and then see how things go?
Yeah, I mean, and it, it would be an easy way to move forward with, if we, if we want to stick with the FDR from greenhouse to New 85. I mean, it's up to this board at this juncture, it'd be nice to give you guys an answer though. I wish I had a good ear so he could have a little bit of input, but.
So you've done a lot more than I do. What would be the possibility of putting liners and some of them galvanized pipe? Some of them, there's a lot of acceleration on there being.
Yeah, we do a lot of that, you know, across the district. We have culvert lining jobs because it's just, it's more feasible, right? So depending on the condition of them, you know, you gotta go out there and check them out and, and get them inspected and see, are they rotten out? Is there any pipe left, whatever, you know? But yeah, that's always an option. And that, those kind of things can be vetted out through this design process with these guys. That's part of their job, so, yeah.
Jim, on those culverts, when you evaluated them the first time, like when you put excellent or whatever, um, or good condition, fair, whatever, however you mark them, that was at the beginning of the project. So if it's not gonna be for until, say, 2027, that evaluation could change in that amount. I mean, it could. Go ahead.
I guess this is really out of my wheelhouse, but, um, to me, you know, if you want a project to do well and last a long time, you know, anything starts with the foundation. And this would be the time to look at the foundation and make sure that you're starting well with that, you know? Living on a gravel road, I know where the culverts are is where we have problems. So it makes more sense to, to fix those. We've, we're cutting our expense back as much as we can, but let's not, let's not lose track completely of what we're doing. Let's give ourselves a fighting chance this lasting as long as it can by making sure those culverts are, are good when we get started.
If you're just joining us, Nate, do you want to fill them in on where we're at?
Oh.
Kind of where my email was. I mean, other than we're, we're, I mean, the options are still out there to pave the whole thing. Or we replace every culvert, we ask initially to replace every culvert. We find out that it's too expensive to replace every culvert, we fix the ones we can through the scope of the project. And we just do the highway according to agreement eight, one, and FDR according to agreement one. Um, that's kind of the whole part that we've got, but, but it's, uh, right now, we're kind of on, that's where we're at. We some, we just didn't make a decision on what scope we want to have on it. And if we're okay with sticking with the pavement and FDR, here is absolutely right. We need to address the underside of it. And if we can't afford every one of them, maybe we leave a couple of them there in the gravel area unfixed temporarily.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you just, it gives us all, everybody a starting point, right? And so we can just go, right? And that's our normal process and so.
So five and six, when the public was here, are those the two, or the pizza barn? So I would suggest those two definitely get redone. Cause they said those were definitely the.
Well, there was apparently something underneath, I mean, it's causing XO1. The culvert's actually pretty good on the inside and the other one, there's a couple of cracks in it, you know?
And I think Commissioner Todd hit it, if we're gonna leave any, if you evaluate that they can last, that we leave them in the gravel, the FDR areas, so they can be dug up a lot easier, don't disrupt and we have to do the paving, but there's definitely more than, she's right, but I mean, there's definitely more in two, but I think that area they're talking about is under the paving or that pizza barn is, so that's gonna get fixed anyway.
Well, that first one on there too, there's a five-foot galvanized pipe and it's junk.
Yeah.
You know, the public has been pretty, bear with us, it's pretty good. Yeah, we put, do some asphalt down and then we go in a year later, dig it up for culvert. No, I don't want to even go down that road, you know?
And then, and Mr. Chair, that's a risky take, you know? It's a, it's a lot easier to repair a culvert under a gravel road than it is on.
Yeah, well, I mean, so. Like if we're, if we're doing this, let's, let's get it done, do it right if we can afford it.
Well, the timeframe this update is 27, 28, correct?
Yeah.
So it's, it's a ways. So they're gonna be unhappy with this anyway, but it is what it is.
We're, we're fine, you know, and if it, that's when it's programmed, you know, and I keep saying scheduled, but the money's programmed for that, that year right now, right?
Actually, constituents want to get it fixed, you know, so it's not fast enough for them, which I see their point, so.
And we have a grant manager, well, a grant person now that can put in for culverts.
That's true.
And who knows, between the timeframe between now and then, there may be some other monies come out that we can apply for to do some of the culvert work, you know?
What's the pleasure of the board?
Any motion that we, um, or the Jimmy's discretion and, and advisement of these gentlemen with the state, that we look to address the culverts under the entire road within the scope of the Crip project? And if we find we can't afford them, we address that at the beginning.
Second.
I got a motion properly seconded, ending discussion. All those in favor, including the culverts in that, in that motion, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Pass. All those against?
Mr. Chair, just, I want to clarify. So we're gonna go back to paving between town limits and greenhouse and FDR and gravel road from there back to Highway 85.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. We'll get the agreement going.
All right.
Is that the original agreement?
Plus culverts.
Thank you guys for working with us on this. It's, it's a little confusing and we're, we're just trying to figure out what the best option for us is.
Can we talk about signs again? Is there anything we can do to slow that traffic down during the summer? That's being routed that way with their Google? Is there, can we put up local traffic only or something to help possibly make people think twice about it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Madam Commissioner, it's your guys' road, you can do whatever you like. We don't have anything to do with that.
I do have two no-through traffic signs, I did get the signs.
Great.
And there's one posted on greenhouse that's no through commercial traffic, but it's kind of not real visible where it's at. So I was gonna put one no-through traffic sign on greenhouse and then one on the other end by the bridge. I didn't think it made a lot of sense, but I'm, you know, on the pizza barn end of it, you know?
Yep. It's worth a try.
And we did resubmit, we're in the process of resubmitting our paperwork. We wired out so that it was known with Google and then we didn't get that taken care of, so.
Super.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I know I'm not part of this meeting, but DOT is here, would it be available to put that sign on the highway right away before they made that turn with their camper and, and boat and Jeep on behind? So they know not to make that turn or we think about it before they got to that turn and made that turn and then know where to turn around?
Mr. Chair, to answer that question, yes, that could be done. You know, it, it'd be responsibility to pay for that sign, but for the county, obviously. And it, then it's just an encroachment permit that your, uh, asset is in our right way.
Okay.
We, we have that a lot, you know, you know, the, like the new flashing speed limit signs and that, you know? The, the flashing, that, those aren't ours. We allow them to be there and the counties or towns or whatever fund those. But we allow them to be in our right way with the permit. So whatever the county would propose to have, what's on the sign and location or whatever, we go through our normal process with the district office and shared.
Jimmy, would you mind getting a, kind of a quote on some signs for that? Cause I'm sure they're additional.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Yeah, suppose next time.
Oh, it's, you know, they're, they're gonna be right there.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, Isaac just, uh, told me that, uh, it's fiscal year 27. Our fiscal year's October to October. So more than likely, uh, would be construction in 28. Once that goes, yeah, cause it'd probably be a late 27 bid letting, just cause where we're at. So we could see the construction happen in 28.
Great, awesome. Yeah, any other questions while they're here? I want to, the road crew, I realize it was on it, but I want to continue to commend them. They have done outstanding job. So hopefully we'll spread that word to them, that whole group is just super awesome.
Really, Mr. Chair, really appreciate that. They had a long night, uh, as you know, roads were closed north of us and, uh, they're open now.
Yeah.
Hopefully that's the last time until October.
Hopefully.
It's a hard job and I can appreciate whether they're gonna snow.
Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, thanks for having us.
Yep, thank you.
And hopefully Alexis online was watching. Wish you'll call me.
You guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Jim?
It'll, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, it'll probably take a couple of weeks till we get that new agreement out, so, for a second, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, bye.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we had a wing wall come down this morning on one of those, called the bridge or a cattle underpass over Russell Vegas. It's, uh, I visited with the landowner this morning. He was agreeable, he was pulling that out, maybe put an eight-foot culvert across there, doing away with our underpass.
Is that a little, that little bridge?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, those, they were probably nice 80 years ago when they built them. Time for them to go. I've, I've tried to get some prices on a pipe, but I have to message for a guy to call me back. If we use county road fund money on it, we would have to do a. If we use county road fund money on it, we would have to do a hydrology study because we went from bridge to culvert. But I think I'll have enough in my budget to cover that pipe from there, so. Fisher's saying the gravel, they're gonna don't regravel it to regravel Beaver Creek from Highway sixteen to the gravel pit. I visited with the guy yesterday at Wounding Rents, got a saw lined up for next week to start going down, it's all cuts. I don't know how much cutting you guys want me to do on that road. Something to keep in mind to patch, you know, it's gonna be at least fifteen hundred bucks, you know, for asphalt if I can get it. Or an end up with the gravel's a hundred dollars. Pretty much. I thought there's kind of a low spot out there by Genoofs. I was gonna, it's a fairly good stretch and I was just gonna cut that whole hunk of gravel in there. You know, we could at least maintain it. If there's another spot kind of like Kelly's that we could probably cut out. I don't know over those box culverts, you know, if we want to cut those out or not. You know, if we just do a strip, it's not really something we can maintain. We put gravel in there and pack it and hope it lasts. But you know, if it's just that small narrow little strip, there's not, you know, really a lot we can do with it other than maybe add gravel to it if it deteriorates. So I don't know if you guys want to, you know, cut those, or have season over those or not.
I would say, me personally, I would say, you know, are the one that maintains these roads and your team, so I would use your best judgment on that.
You know, if we're three, four years out on the project and it's obviously not gonna get better.
Yeah, you go cutting across top of them box culverts, you might be opening up a can of worms and having a real mess. I'd just say, use your discretion.
Well, you know, it's not like we can't come back and do it another time.
I use that word quite a bit, and yes, it's a bump, but it depends on how fast you're driving also. Is it, maybe instead of doing anything where those box culverts are hit up, could we put up a sign that says, "Bump"? I mean, that's a simple fix for now. I, instead of, I mean, yes, yes, there's a bump there, but if you're going, if you're going thirty, it's not too bad. If you go fifty, it's quite a bump. I didn't say that, but.
Thirty, it's a bump, seventy, it's a ramp.
It's a ramp. It could be a ramp.
Jump it. It's all in perspective.
I, I think, I think you might make more, like I'm like him, I think it might make more trouble for you if you cut those out. But I do agree with that by Genoofs, maybe just gravel that.
Yeah, you know, it had some rotor mill on it and we finally just bladed that off where we could. There's still some remnants of it there, but it's, it's rough, you know, I think they'd be a lot happier with some gravel. You know, and that's held up well, that piece we did up by the bridge stayed pretty good. I did get ahold of T-Square on the traffic study for that road and we're still about a month out. Which arguably we were next on the list, so hopefully they'll be coming.
We appear to have time.
A lot.
So also, I was gonna visit with you guys about, I was looking into, maybe I can order totes of maglorite flakes. Coming two thousand pound totes. And we could be able to buy that ourselves with sand spreaders on our end dunks. You know, without those, with our trucks not mowed or not metered, so it'd be kind of a guessing game. Our first few times we did it to get our application process right. But it's eighteen hundred a tote and it'd probably run about two totes per mile, so it'd be about thirty-six hundred a mile.
What's the cost of the totes?
Eighteen hundred per tote.
And you have to come along spreading, then run water on top of it to get activated?
Yeah, on these, you actually water first.
Okay.
I thought maybe it'd be something dry, you know, some of these smaller spots.
That might be a little bit of a, help band-aid out there on old eighty-five where you're gonna put the gravel in.
Yeah, sure could, you know, instead of trying to do these C-MAC projects on some of these smaller spots, you know, it'd be easier to put that down. You don't even let the little bit of gravel pit, you know, that wouldn't be that big of a deal for us to do that ourselves. That end on breakneck, that always washboards, we could put it down there, you know, that prevents all of that stuff.
Might be an answer to a lot of your crash corner washboards, um.
Yeah, some of the smaller places.
Yeah, where you need a hundred yards of it.
So I guess with your guys' blessing, I was gonna put an order in and give it a shot, you know, if it either works well for us or it doesn't.
Just let us know how it works out.
Sounds good to me.
I guess I was, I was a two about, I don't know what you guys had plans for the county road fund for the next two years of the, of the projects. But I would like to request some gravel money, maybe out of the year.
You, you're gonna be doing that before or after July?
Uh, well, I don't know. Things aren't looking that good right now. We've done quite a few projects.
Well, I mean, we, we can put it in the next budget.
Yeah, no, it probably wouldn't happen now.
Yeah, bring that up in budget time and we'll work through it.
Anything else? I think that's pretty much it.
Again, and thank your crew too, they've been, had a busy morning, I'm sure.
Yeah, not quite what we expected. Had a heck of a time even getting two of our blade at four corners, so.
I know, you know, in breakneck, I woke up and there's a flow of snow up there and I was like, what? It was one to three inches.
Yeah, usually, you know, this time of year, you're accumulating the grass, but not the oil, certainly wasn't against me, you know?
I seen a couple of trucks scooting down the hill almost over that embankment this morning, I can tell, so.
Were they bladed on oil, Kirk? They were kind of squishy and soft.
Yeah, the new gravel was pretty soft.
This'll work, this'll pack it in good now.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Two, it's easy. She's not, oh, that's right, that's right, do it off. New business. All right, I sent out that, uh, resolution. Um, I'm not set on it, I'm not, I would like to have discussion on it. The purpose of it was really just what it says, is we have an election coming up. One, the resolution does not affect anyone, uh, that is currently sitting that isn't up for reelection. They'd have to wait sort of like the Barton thing. I had some help writing it and, well, welcome to column, Jeremiah, talking about it. I got the county attorneys involved so that it wasn't anything, but what we had talked about was, the purpose is, is for example, there's one guy that's running and it's their purpose and I get it, wants the medical benefits, which is irrelevant to that. But we're, we're struggling with our budget. We are paid to come to those two meetings and there is other things that we do. So I'm not taking away from those, that's why I added in there, if there's anything related to county business or, uh, and that was a Jeremiah Redmond suggestion, county business or going down to Cheyenne or any of that. And four per year, which in a four-year term is sixteen days off. It's not, again, we're all elected for whatever reasons, you know, we may not always get along and we have difference of opinions, but the people expect us to be here and involved in and engaged in. And I think that if that money went back into the coffers, you know, for example, like our subscription to the employee council or some of those things happened, that adds up quite a bit. And we have had, whether we want to say it or not, we have had quite a few absences. Some of them were very legitimate and some of them weren't. Some of them, we were getting paid to be somewhere else while we're getting paid to be here. And that's the kind of, that's the thing that I was looking at, is holding ourselves accountable. And whether I'm reelected or not, I'd, if I was reelected, I'd be the first one to have to live by that standard. So I am leading, or trying to lead by example. And that's all I'm asking this board to do. So, um, we, some of these surveys are good, that survey was put out two months ago, I brought it, who knows whether it's trustworthy or not. But should elected officials forfeit pay for missing meetings? Eighty-three percent said yes, they should. And if there's valid reasons, I think common sense comes in there. But there have been times when we haven't come because we have been compensated in other areas. So I'm asking the board to consider passing that resolution. There's several statutes that were looked at, I wish they were here, that Jeremiah brought up, but they don't seem to conflict. And it's really up to the board and frankly, Jeremiah thinks that it would, there'd be other boards that would adopt it. We did have a case where we had, um, which they mentioned during the Barton case, where a guy gets elected and he moves to Hawaii and says, "Send your check." It's not fair for the constituents to have to pay for us to not be here when we knew the, we knew what we got ourselves into. And we all have other stuff to do and some of it's more important, it's valid. But when you go to work at any job, if you're out of vacation time and sick time, you don't get paid. That's just the way it is. So I'm, I'm asking you guys to consider it and if we want to pass it, I'd, I'd like to pass it. And it's nothing that I, I've said it from the day I got elected, that I thought we should live under those rules too. So that's my feeling on it. I'm hoping it up for discussion, what you guys think. And I did present this to you guys as it's written as soon as I got it.
So I just have a question, if the wages taken away, your benefits still have to be taken care of in the office as far as, insurance and all that, is that employee then going to come in and write checks to the county to take care of insurance and all of that? Because it has to still be good for.
Yes, and this is just strictly the pay after insurance, which Jeremiah advised that we could do. We're basically splitting in half and I'm not suggesting to touch the insurance, I mean, that was brought up by Commissioner Todd at one point to save some money.
It has, it's, it's not, it's, so it comes out of that pay?
It's your take-home pay after that, divided in half. That's what, what I'm proposing. So whatever we get, say, I get a check for six hundred and forty-nine dollars, it'd be just simply divided in half. Each meeting is three hundred and twenty whatever dollars and that would be put back into whatever payroll, general account, whatever it comes into. But if you do the math, when we, the last cycle, the last four years, I believe we had thirty, at thirty missed statutory meetings by all of us, one of us, all of us, in a four-year period, that adds up at three hundred dollars per. That's a lot of money. So that's the only purpose for it. I'm not suggesting anyone is, you know, this person's that, I get, we have other stuff to do. I'm saying we're leading by example and that's, that's all I'm saying.
Um, I, I think it's leading by example and, you know, we expect our other employees to show up for work. And, and of course, you know, common sense would rule if you had an illness or an emergency in your family, you know, there's things like that. But of course, um, that's completely different. But, um, I think it's at least showing that, that we're, we want to show that we're taking it seriously and, and doing the same thing we expect our employees to do.
Commissioner Todd?
I think, I went back and counted, in the last four years, I saw nowhere that a single commissioner missed more than four meetings. So I think this resolution accomplishes nothing at this point. Because I don't know anybody that's waking up in the morning and saying, "I don't feel like going to the commissioner."
No, I'm not.
I, I just don't, you know, I don't see that we're fixing a problem with this resolution. Uh, you know, I could choose not to go to Houston with my wife.
That's a different matter.
It's not a different matter, Don.
It is.
It is not. And, and that's the problem that also exists, is then you sit on a board where we're now judging what matters to who of the same elected officials for the same position. So Vera might care deeply about something, but I have no idea how she feels about it and that might be extremely important for her. And I, I just don't see the mechanism that this needs to be put in place when there's currently not an issue that I'm seeing here that this resolves. And I also am a hundred percent certain that if this moves forward, you better get the attorney general's opinion on it because I think your approaching on the setting a salary statute, which, which is every four years, we're not in that timeframe. And, you know, I, I don't, I just don't see this fixing anything wrong.
Nathan, I don't mean to disagree on one point, that, uh, I know that Barton missed more, I was hearing that four-year term too, and he missed more than four meetings. Uh, that's a fact, we can go back if you want to check it, there was many more meetings missed. Now, he's not here anymore, but.
I went back four years, Don, but I didn't see it. Whether or not he did, whether he showed up late, doesn't matter.
I'm not talking about late, I'm, I'm saying, and you say it doesn't accomplish anything, like, you're passionate about it, I get it. One of the reasons that I'm considering, of course, you gotta go with your wife, you gotta do those things, that was all considered. But then, if you say the board decides it, well, then you get the favoritism, which has existed, which you and I can disagree on all day long, where this is my three friends and this is your two friends, and then it gets ugly anyway. This, any job that you set into, you need to be there. And I don't think anyone gets up to, but you can't say that there haven't been commissioners that have said, "I'm only here for benefits, I get paid whether I'm there or not," or "I get paid somewhere else and still get paid."
So what problem are we fixing?
We're fixing that we're encouraging people to attend the meetings.
That they're already making?
No, they're not already making. How many?
Nobody's missed four. You're the only one that's missed a meeting this year that I'm aware of.
Uh, no?
So two of you have missed a meeting this year.
And how many?
Do you think, every time, I've never been in this chamber and there's nothing at porn. I don't know what problem we're fixing. I mean, to me, it's not about the money, Don. I don't care about the money. But I do see a potential for, somebody gets sick and then I sit in judgment of whether I'm gonna approve past their four meetings that they've missed, whether or not they continue to get paid. You know, I, if somebody goes to work and uses their sick days and they don't go to work, do they go, "Hey, I was sick, I get paid anyway"? No, they don't. Go ahead.
I'm gonna elaborate like what Nate said. It hasn't, nobody's been missing meetings, so it's, you're not fixing a problem, we don't, I don't see a problem we have existing. And you keep using this, "Well, if you go to work, you get paid if you don't get it." Well, what happens when you go to meetings that aren't scheduled meetings? Do I, does someone get paid extra, get paid overtime? When you're away from your family for six, eight days a year, doing, representing the county and elsewhere? You're wanting to draw this up to take money away from somebody, but you're not putting any allowance back in. You're trying to compare it to a daily.
When you go to Cheyenne, you get paid your mileage, you get paid to go down there.
I get reimbursed from a mileage. That is said in state statute that you will be reimbursed.
That's correct.
And we, this wouldn't, you couldn't even do this until at least another two years because the site, your wages are set every four years by statute. So I'm up, if I go run for election, it won't affect me because it's got to go through the whole wage setting cycle. And I don't, I don't think we have a problem, but to me, it's, you head on early, you said there's somebody out there campaigning on election about that. It's all about grandstanding at election time right now. That's the feeling I get, is somebody wants to grandstand here at election with the resolution that, "By God, we're gonna do this", we don't have a problem. Nobody's missed that many meetings.
And I get that, but if we want to talk backs like Nathan's talking about, well, you missed a meeting, yeah, I missed a meeting this year, but how many did I miss in my four years? And how many did you miss?
Is that what this is about, is pound of flesh?
No, no, this is about coming to the meetings and let's talk about those workshops. We have meetings scheduled for workshops for budgets that nobody showed up for, the two of us. Well, we have passionate things about things and for some reason, if you can't see my point on it, I'm sorry. I see what you're saying, that's why I consider that is as soft as it could be, that I thought it could be. And the board doesn't have to pass it, but you can call it grandstanding at all. But I've been to more workshops in the past four years than you have, I've been to more meetings in the last four years than you have. I have participated as a commissioner because I was paid and I signed up for it. And that's a fact you can't argue. How many days have you spent in Cheyenne? How many days have you spent away from here? That's a fact. And I looked at the meetings, the two meetings I missed in the last year, it was a total of four hours and fifteen minutes that those two meetings combined took up. Great, I understand, but those statutory meetings are county, mostly county business, what we're doing here.
Quite of order. I think we're getting personal and possibly off subject. I, I, there may not be, in my. there may not be, in my opinion, there, there's not a problem now, but I can certainly see where, uh, if the right person gets into the office, there definitely could be, there could be a problem in future. Um, because there's nothing really saying that you, yes, you're supposed to be here, but there's something that holds you accountable. Maybe we're accountable, but maybe the next person won't be. And that's something to look at also.
Go ahead.
To my knowledge and statute, I don't even think you're supposed to attend two meetings a month. It's one meeting a month. It's the first meeting of the month where you sign your vouchers, A. And then B, if, if this is gonna proceed in this board, I think you damn well better get the approval of the Attorney General before we start pretending that our attorneys or we know what's right and what's wrong.
We've done that before, haven't we?
Done what, Don?
We have, I, I, it, it doesn't, I'm presenting it to the board. We don't have to vote a pass. But it's great. You want to get the Attorney General involved. I'm fine with it. I've tried to do my homework on it and you guys are welcome to do that too. But we have picked and choose what we're gonna follow the attorney's rules on before and.
Which, what are you referring to, Don? What are you accusing me of?
I'm not accusing him of anything. I'm just saying, we as a board have done before.
What have you done?
We were advised to tell people our vote.
We were also, we were also advised to stay mum about it, Don.
No, we weren't.
Let's, let's not enter into some different weeds that don't belong in this conversation.
We're talking about lawsuits and Attorney General. You asked me. I was leaving it out. You wanted to know.
Point of order. Point of order. You're getting way off track.
I'm proposing it to the board. If it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. It has nothing to do with grandstanding and I've been talking about it from day one of my election. Yes, go ahead, please.
Talking about day one of your election, I remember campaign promises that if we took the $200 raise, someone was going to give their $200 raise every month to charity.
Has it ever happened?
Nope.
It sure hasn't. And I was told that I was not allowed to, but I have donated to the community plenty. If you want to see those. Have you been paid for driving truck and not shown up for a meeting? You sure have.
I've been paid. My company got paid.
Don, you're getting paid for driving an ambulance. It's faster too.
And I told everybody at that time, "Please do it and see what's involved."
Point of order, please.
Yeah. On, in speaking with Jeremiah Reiman and him interacting with, with other counties and whatnot, um, have you explained the resolution?
You're more than welcome to get him on the phone, talk to him. Yes.
Did he have any input on it?
He talked about the statute that Nathan did. I mean, he wanted to give credit to Commissioner Wagner for going down during those meetings, that that should be considered in there. Um, but he said it's definitely holding people accountable and there's other places in the county where people aren't showing up and still getting paid. So, you're more than welcome to call and ask them about that. So, yes.
We're very, you know, if we get, if somebody gets elected in and reviews to show up, that's where you can go to the governor and have him removed because they're not holding up there. They're, that's a way out. If somebody gets elected and says, "See, send my checks in."
You were aware of the Barton thing and our, Mr. Ogden said, I mean, that happened. The guy went, moved to Hawaii and he was paid till the end of his term.
Governor can remove him though. If he, if he makes that very clear that he's not gonna show up, he's in Hawaii.
But he didn't.
Another way to look at it, if, if this doesn't look good to people, you know, I still feel like we should go through and look at our, our personal board policies and procedures, like Teton County, you know, we're talking about that, maybe looking at that. Because we're, we expect all our other boards to have policies and procedures. So, it, it could be built into that. You could have something built into your own policies and procedures regarding that. It's just a suggestion.
I, like I said, it's presented to the board. Um, what you guys do with it is...
How you doing?
Got the desk settled up, the gravel pit?
Oops.
Oops.
Does it see that better?
It was sorted at one time.
Don't you hate that? We about had another one instead.
Marty, how are you?
How are you guys?
Good, you?
Good.
Welcome.
Thanks.
I'm gonna state your name so everybody knows.
Marty Habeck, Timberline Services.
So, this is for the CMAC bid opening. What do we need to do here?
You need to open it.
Yeah. Somebody have a knife?
I don't carry knives. I'm gonna start hacking one. I'm gonna base me in it too.
They got no power and about six inches of snow from what I hear.
No power?
I had to get hacked up by the time.
Yeah, it's still running.
It's pretty tight.
Not sure.
Well, then, do any of the big power lines go down or just?
There's one apparently that comes across the highway.
I don't think I see it.
I see that's why it was closed this morning.
More wind, probably.
Yeah, I don't know. I said, I just saw something that said 2,800 meters of power.
Yeah.
Beaver, Sundance. Yeah, my kid goes to school up there. They did a late start this morning and then bumped it back another hour. Still haven't come in, but yeah, from what I hear, they have no lights on in the school. No nothing.
No key.
So, man, they're really pushing not to have to extend another day.
So, I have the bid, bid form, bid schedule A on Morrissey Road, bid schedule B for Beaver Creek Road. I'll check it. The bid submitted dated May 2nd. The merchant company bond. Timberline Services. Looks like cover page. Disadvantaged Business Certification, Certificate of Suspension and Department, not applicable. Registration for the Wyoming Secretary of State. Certificate of Residency for Timberline Services. Timberline Services, Inc., from the Office of Secretary of State as a profit corporation. Bidder Certification, State of Wyoming Department of Workforce Services Certificate, State of Wyoming Department of Workforce Services Compensation Certificate for Good Standing. Identification Title, EEO Coordinator. United States Department of Transportation Standard Title Assurances Discrimination Provisions Form 1 through, looks like eight. Appendix Identity Information for Timberline Services and the Certificate of the President Secretary of, of Timberline Services. The amount of the bid is... For Morrissey Road, $75,700. Beaver Creek Road, $17,925. I think that's, I'll add those two together. I think that's it. Am I correct?
Yep. Unless you want more.
Yeah. Is the check okay? Do I need to initial this? I'll second David. That's it.
What's that?
I'll pass that down to the C. Does that go to the glass one?
We wanna award this bid today or do we want to just give it to Jimmy first? Check it over and make sure it's in good line. What would you prefer, Jimmy? You're not gonna start next week, are you?
Sounds like somebody's got some work to do before they get to work.
How much do you have there?
If they actually come in $4,500 under, I'll probably check it out.
Damn it.
You'd like a set of tires on the table. Well, four steer tires.
I ain't got anything else to do today though. Good. We could solve a lot of problems.
You sure?
He's been sitting outside. I'm pretty sure that he heard like everything.
I'm lucky for the people that solve their problems. Of course, I could just go to the bar and sit there. You guys would be a little bit more tied down.
Take care of the 45 miles, right?
So, you're saying beers are on you, Jim?
Might be funner for me.
It's called a change order.
Change order, that's right. Extra fluid for the tires.
Dust, dust mitigation.
Dust mitigation, yeah. Just hold it out here, guys, just there.
I mean, we can do it either way. It sounds like everyone can order. Make a motion. We award the CMAC dust mitigation to Timberline Services for the Morrissey Road and Beaver Creek Road. Total amount, if my math is correct, is $93,625.
Good job. I second that.
I have a motion properly seconded to award the bid to Timberline Services. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
As opposed?
See, we can agree on some.
All right. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for bidding.
Who's thinking about that, Vera? You seconding this?
Yes.
See you later.
Bye, Marty.
Thanks for that.
I'll make coffee when I get it to you. He's got that people on there.
No, no, it's just down, it's down by the gravel pit area.
So, Jim thinks YDOT needs to approve that before the board. So, would you like to rescind your motion?
I would like to make, make an amendment to my motion with YDOT's approval. Do I give it the second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yep, there we go.
Okay, that works.
We don't hold nothing up that way. That'd be, that'd be a good option down there. Somebody wants to make that, right?
Yeah, because, you know, it would be, even if it just did, in front of our house and in front of the ranch house, I should like, not even have.
You figure 18, 18 or more for half a mile, that's plus, plus what we have to put in all.
Product. I was going through the same thing. We'd have about 16, two kind of product.
Trying to figure out who wants what.
At the prices that Jim gave us.
Aye.
16, two.
Can we start these now?
Of course, DOT says they do. And the last map that I've received still does, you know. I, I, all I want to do is get it cleaned up. You know, I can say, "Yeah, you do," but then I just push the can down the road to the next generation. Get it cleaned up. I don't, I'm not a surveyor. I don't understand what I'm looking at. But I got one map that says something else and you're saying something else. Okay, just show me where they're wrong so I can understand it. That's all I want to do, you know? Or where I'm wrong. I, I don't care whether I'm wrong or right. Let's, let's get it right.
So, do we want to kill this or make a motion? I presented it. It's up to the board.
Any discussion? I'm, I honestly don't think that it's a bad idea at all. I think it's something that we should probably consider for future involvement, although I do want to make sure that we are within, um, employment regulations and state statute in following through with, with that resolution.
So, how do we do that to, how would it put the board's mind at rest to see if it's?
You guys said Attorney. Take it to Attorney General. So, it's a good opinion, right?
No problem with that. I'll give it to Michael to send to the Attorney General to get his stamp of approval or not approval.
We need to make a motion to table it down to, then?
I'm not sure how long that'll take, so I guess we can put it back on the agenda when the time comes. Doctor time. It's good.
Where'd these come from?
Paul.
Oh, shit. Why are they good? Yeah.
All the way around. Big stack of papers.
We have the junk ones that are about to bust. These are colored.
The trays?
No, B. I said, "Where did these come from?" I said, where did these come from?
You might ask your dad. Years ago, we had a commissioner that wasn't showing any.
He said, oh, it was still a chair?
Yesterday, it was still a chair. He proposed even those that showed up, like seventy-five hours. And, basically, what that ended up, there was two of us initially, we didn't take it, because we were under the opinion of your salary. You know, to the street, they did take it for a very short period of time. And we decided that was illegal, that's why it was more important to move. Your salary was allowed. I don't know, now that you have HR, the first thing I think of is one of the people that will ask you to take off. Because it is salary provision, but I don't, that's just my suggestion.
I think the easiest way to do it is two years from now, he set it in when he set salaries. It's hardly a determination to set in salary. Because taking a meeting is no more than picking up the phone and calling in for five minutes when it's in the meeting. You don't have to show up here. I mean, if that's up to, ridiculous to me.
I think that, that's, commissioner had done that in the past, so that he would, you know, when they got two to vote, that he wanted to vote on. And he claimed he was a, or attended a meeting, and I agree with that, what happened in the past, in my, my opinion. I think that, well, that's just me, I think it's, it's salary, if you have been selling until, you know, half the office has been in for, you know, when you run.
It wouldn't affect anybody before. Four years, not affect, even if you set the salaries in two years, it'd affect
Three, new ones.
Six years from now, when it would go and affect. Because we have to reset the salaries in two years.
So the new commissioners will get, the new salary, the old commissioners will run this.
Yeah, well, it'd be in, in, in two years. The three positions will be open up in two years, it would affect them. Because we have to set it before that election, or before that filing period, two years from now.
Yeah, and it'd only affect three of the commissioners. Until the others, you know, two years from now. Yeah. You're right, that's the thought, that's the strategy.
That'd be pretty easy, I mean, you could even set it to one meeting, if you mess one meeting. This is what you get per meeting, you a ten, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I don't think it'd be difficult to do it.
But by state law, you're only required to have to go to one meeting, or do the one meeting a month.
Yeah.
Or the county is required to meet one. It doesn't say anything about the board, how many board members, that's him. That's what little legal knowledge I have.
Oh, no.
I'm sad.
Those two are on their own.
Yeah, none of your great truck drivers. You're rough, you're hard, with the M K.
Loaded or unloaded? Oh, loading, oh. That's not good, Dave. That's not good. We came up on a, about two hours behind a mess out there one day, down there by Wright. Crew truck he was loading, you know, like their back trucks, they dumbed out, they quit loading. He was pumping on, he fell asleep. He was pulling out of two, no, that was only five, they were five hundred barrel tanks, and he was pulling like two sixty out. And there was a pond, the whole location was pond. He would've drove off, but somebody else caught him while he was sleeping, otherwise he would've drove off and left it. That one was a, shut that location down for about a week.
Well, apparently, a driver was loading in the location, his gauge on the track was not working. But he either forgot to open up the amp valve, or it didn't open. And gauge wasn't working, so he climbed up on top of the hatch. No, not telling how much pressure he had on the track, but apparently, it blew him off the top of the truck. And blew his clothes off. Did that bother him or?
Oh, you don't need it?
And unfortunately.
Okay, I'll be there in a minute, real quick.
Well, I don't know, they had flights of life, you know, and stuff like that, so I don't know any other details on that, pretty, pretty good.
So the state's saying they have a right away. We're still not finding anything in the.
Well, I'm not saying the state's wrong, all I'm saying is help them with our mapping program, not picking it up.
Yeah.
And I'm not denying the state couldn't write, you know, I could talk about. And their mapping devices are right, but unless there's something that's not being fixed up here, uh, who's right and who's wrong? You know, I know what the intention was, and I have no home with that intention, but let's get the map right.
That reverts to that right away is if, uh, it's state or is it county right now?
It is county.
That's what I thought. So inevitably, at the end of the day, we could relinquish X amount of feet of that right away to you, I mean, I mean, is that your?
What I want to clean up is that portion just before the bridge. Where it shows that there is no right away.
Oh, that's right.
That's what I want to clean up. And of course, yeah, I would.
The reason I brought that.
Other than right there, maybe at the bridge.
Uh, I was there at a quarter till one.
What I want to get that map cleaned up, so that.
They're going through and getting the names, which is really slow.
And I'm not playing on sound, I'm not playing on anything.
Looking for the precincts, some people don't know, so they gotta look that up, takes a little bit.
Well, if it be in a countywide election, they shouldn't have to know your precinct.
How they do for record keeping.
No, they shouldn't be keeping track of your precinct, it's a countywide election.
Well, you're on the big league, big sheet, but they're, they're writing, they're, they're writing down what precinct you're in to find your, they know, they'll know what precinct you're in to find your name on the list. That, that's, that's where the precinct stuff come in. Because they could, uh, know what precinct you're in, would help them find your name on the list, otherwise they start from the very correct precinct all the way through.
He's pretty good with handling.
We didn't have wash tugs, but a voucher.
See, I know, I know, I was.
That's a Brittany thing, because Tony bish, because they weren't in something easy for him to do. Actually, he was wanting to change the whole process.
He didn't wanna fold.
And he actually went to other counties to see how they did it, and their, their thing, the wash tubs.
Be pretty cool if there was a digital process.
Oh, no, then there's no transparency.
Yeah, there is, you just scan them.
I am not scanning.
Every one of them.
No.
Paper trail, paper trail.
Exactly.
They love, they should do vouchers.
There's also some counties who don't have the books in the vault. They're all digital, and I would never.
We were up at Campbell County, recording something, it went in the vault.
They have employees that are, that just work in the vault, I mean.
Yeah, that's how they.
In their clerk's office, I bet they have thirty or forty people.
Their vault's as big as a floor floor, maybe bigger.
I know someone will come in and they'll be like, okay, so when will that be recorded? And we'll like, come on, oh, we should have it back to you within a week, and they're like, what? Campbell County, it takes them months to get our stuff back to us.
So you'd need phone bills, because I think no head to tail of a rebuilding process.
The utility ground is big and.
These two are supplement.
In court appointed sheriff's department, we received a sign, we got a voucher for Bradley. And he set her down for, finally the sheriff for the end. Did you get a Bradley riding machine, I don't know if they were Bradley, or, you know, kind of a tank, like, I, I don't know. It turned out to be, it's a black cartridge for urinal, called a Bradley cartridge.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, I'm sure every new commissioner's come through here, and you're seeing eight cases of muffins and other food from Black Hills Chemical Company.
Yeah.
Like, okay.
Well, sheriffware was easy to tease, or I like teasing anyway. And someone had gone to order clothing, female clothing, because they had female prisoners, and it was like, oh, a two hundred dollar bill for bra. Well, like, a case of bras, or twenty-four bras, or something for their team. So we were accusing him of lying to his girlfriend, uh.
Sounds funny.
And he didn't have a girlfriend, he was very happily married, but it was just, it was just something that, okay, don't understand the voucher, sheriff, tell us about it.
They're probably still over there.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm a female prisoner, the jail is, but obviously, the inventory. But I'll always remember the Bradley cartridge, I did not prepare. Well, everybody have done.
You too.
Anything accomplished in the day.
Marty, my best.
I will. She was willing to come out, sit in on discussions, but her help was no be in the Sundance, didn't have any electorate to be in.
You'll be up late tonight, waiting on your call.
No, I won't.
Oh, you'll wait till in the morning?
It is what it is.
Well, you know it's gonna be a good election when it's a forty-hour wait to vote. That's what they just posted online, forty minutes, or forty minutes. That's why I was asking Ed how long it took him to vote. Took him a long time to vote.
Really?
And the line was shorter than when these two got in line. That's why I was coming back, like, ah, it's short.
It hasn't closed yet, that's right.
Right.
Oh, yeah, forgot you're on that sucker, aren't you?
Are you sure you wanna do that?
Are you doing some last minute campaigning?
Oh, yeah. No, it is what it is, I just love it, I also love it. I don't think there's any short term here for anything.
Been a long time. How long's it been since you've been a commissioner?
I don't know, I don't even remember, I have to go look at my, see when I. Been a long time since I've ever did.
Let me see if I can look on the, on the website.
Did you see that email I sent you, Becky?
When did you send it? I haven't been on my email since this morning, I'll have to go look.
We gotta give the department a honor.
Joining Mr. Dollar fourteen there.
Were you a commissioner when Mr. Elliott was?
And he got me D H P. Oh!
Do you remember, somewhere told me that while he was a commissioner, that there was agreement made that the city would give the fairgrounds water for free.
I seem to remember something about that, but I don't really, I can't.
Because they put a line across the fairgrounds.
Now, the, bring that up, I, that was.
I kinda think that too. I think Ed was mayor then.
I'm thinking that was, did you bring that up, you know?
Someone told me that was when Mr. Ted Elliott was commissioner, and I said, who's?
Well, they put a line across the new public health building. Or no, no, the new, not the public health building, the the newer building out there, what are, what are they called back?
Public health, wow, public health?
No. Uh, to, in the corner of the fairgrounds, by the gate when you go in.
Yeah, the.
Or event center?
Yeah, the event center. And they put a line into that.
But see, we had, that had to be annexed into the city for me to do it.
Anexed into the city. But so it would've been the city line going through the fairground.
Yeah.
And I was told that there was an agreement that because of that, the city would always give the fairground water.
So then we just need to look back the year it was built, but I don't think Ted Elliott was alive then.
That, no, that wasn't for, that wasn't for the event center.
Oh.
It was before that, I think they needed to run a line from the east side of the fairgrounds over to, like, Weeden Pass, Fire Hall, that area.
Oh, okay.
And they ran a line through.
Through the fairgrounds.
Through the fairgrounds.
And part of the agreement at that time was.
So it would've been maybe to renew?
Probably about in.
To the renew building, the renew building would've been the newest building over there.
Yeah, yep.
Because the Fire Hall and Weeden Pass, Weeden Pass was an older building.
Yeah.
Fire Hall's been there forever, it would've been to renew, renew would've been built when Ted was alive.
Yes, I think he was there.
Because that would've been like when Martin was on, probably to.
I was there when Renew come to town every month.
But you remember him?
Yes.
I, now that you said it, something about it, that would've been in like, maybe oh, two to oh, six, somewhere's in that area.
Yeah, because I was.
Or it might've been on council when that was done. I might've just been on council when that was done.
Somebody said it was around ninety-seven, but I don't know.
Hmm, that's when I was started at Rock Hill Bridge.
You did it in ninety-seven?
I worked there the summer of ninety-six, and then I was gonna go to college in ninety-seven, and the commissioners were, you know, full time as the office manager.
You graduated in ninety-seven?
Now, see, if she would've went to college, she wouldn't have been using welding gloves to clean the toilet up.
Oh, my God, I was so embarrassed. I had to clean the toilet, the bathroom down there.
With the rough?
It was so gross, I was the only girl down there, so I couldn't find any gloves, so I put welding gloves on. And Ted was the commissioner then, and he just happened to come in, and I'm in there cleaning the bathroom with welding gloves on.
Dedication.
It was, but it was just.
It was dedication, but I, I, I caught a rip hand. Clean gloves, or bathroom gloves, Rick's welding gloves.
Yeah, they were reddish, orangeish colored welding gloves, I can remember.
Did they have enough oil on them that they were about half?
Did they have enough oil on it? They were about half.
Oh, no, they were brand new.
They were?
Yeah.
He probably wanted to kill me when he found out I cleaned the bathroom with welding gloves on. Yeah.
I just had to stop in there at the right time.
Oh, my God. I was mortified.
Was this DOT and Highway twelve still the fueler fairgrounds?
Uh-huh. At the Rose Bridge.
At the Rose Bridge. All right, I said fairgrounds, Rose Bridge.
You'll be third on that. I think everyone saw the.
City don't.
I don't know. I think they're back to getting some, not all.
They're set to.
I think that one's got two.
Some of them.
Well, that's last, agreement lasted for a long time.
I know.
Long time.
The city, they've kind of pulled out when we was going through the new tanks, put the new tanks in. They thought we were gouging them on our.
Too high.
On our fees, our maintenance fees.
Refinery meeting is at six tonight.
Yes. Oh, I forgot to remind you guys, um, the public meeting for that, um, the plan that I sent all of you guys is at six and is at, uh, um. Lodge, meeting room.
Everybody doesn't go, I tend, or I call, like the DEQ about it. It's a very normal process.
It is.
A good process.
Yep. And there has only been one thing that has been brought up because, um, Pam and Stacy, myself, and, um, someone else, I can't remember, was listed as point of contact. Only one person has contacted us and it was, um, Travis Peterson from the city asking questions and, um, what's the Baldwin guy's name?
Uh, uh, I want to say teen.
I know, I was gonna say that too, but I. Is it Mike?
Mike.
Mike Baldwin answered his question, but I think it might maybe address again tonight, but, um, they answered all the questions they had.
Did the refinery, uh, Newcastle Equipment, did they, did they buy that from?
I'm under.
Ground area or shop area or whatever?
I'm under understanding that refinery owns Newcastle Equipment Building.
Okay, and they leased it out.
And they've got some, they've got some kind of an agreement or squeeze. That's.
That's the way I read it and I thought, I didn't know that.
That's what I picked up through the grumbling of the grapevine.
I thought, okay, they're including this property, mentioning Newcastle Equipment.
And that's in that property that is being discussed tonight.
Is the old gas station?
Let me grab my.
I think it's all grooming now. Is that?
Old hop?
The old hop.
Yeah.
Is that included in the area?
I don't know.
It is kind of right across from the, the ladder.
Because that, when I was trying to sell it was, you had to have a level, is it a level two DEQ or?
Okay.
Is it level two?
So it may be the same kind of situation.
Yeah.
And what old regular warehouse?
You can't really see it very well, but.
That's gonna be the old Francis Brooks shop, the old shop, the south one.
Okay.
That's what they call railroad shop.
Okay. The Francis Brooks, like Consets?
Yeah, the south, the, the, yeah, not the, not the one up by the highway.
Yeah. I left it. I couldn't make any heads or tails of that.
You probably just turned it upside down.
Yeah. I know. I thought it was.
I was like, that's not how I handed it to you.
I know. You do it, turn it upside down.
Ted, turn your chair around. It works better.
Okay.
I know this was in the paper, but I was having trouble reading the math and correlating what this to the math on some of those things.
Well, it was like seventy, seventy-some acres of the county.
Really? Yeah, seventy-three point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I almost want to say this just is just a renewal.
Well, I can see.
Because it's right along the bypass.
Yeah.
And I think it might be between the county shop and. The bypass.
Yeah.
So like where the.
The old Bradley.
Yeah, out there where the baseball field used to be. I think that's where it is.
The Bradley, well, no, I'll pick that up. Bradley is owned where the park is.
Yes.
Okay. They gave that to the children's center years ago when the Western County Children's Center.
I hope they're not wanting the children's center.
Yeah, no, it's, it's squared out there. Anyhow, they owned that property, gave it to the children's center to go ahead and build the children's center. And then the children's center traded it to the, Bradley has allowed them to trade it to put it where it is, and then the city made that park.
So.
Jack Bradley, Jack and Lola.
I remember when Jack had that property just west of their place and that was, that's all refinery now.
Yeah.
Big pasture.
Now, now, now all that stuff that was there, the old laden stuff, is out on Mush Creek out there on a piece of their property. Crossing, plumbing, pipeline, but out in pasture on either side of the island.
Okay. We looked at.
We looked at that.
And you remember all the, there were too many dead relatives on the deed to even, even get close to buying that.
I remember there was a hundred and fifty acres, forty acres. There was an ice side jump. We looked at that to go ahead and locate the city of the new dump.
Yeah, I had a lot there.
And it was, well, I remember it was divided up to too many.
It's not divided up.
Yeah.
The deed had, the deed had too many dead relatives listed as owners.
Really?
Yeah, you could, and well, that was Pep looked at and he goes, yeah, you could spend twenty years and maybe get it cleaned up.
Yeah.
My goodness.
Yeah. Or you could, uh, they could claim it something and then it comes up for auction type of deal.
But it was in an unfenced area.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, other people using it for racing and stuff like that. It was just a.
Interesting.
I guess they've already talked about it. So you guys.
You were doing your job. We're just on vouchers and then we're done.
Okay.
We had the real sentence things. Fire captain. Eight to twelve.
Six, eight to twelve, sixteen to twenty, sixteen to twenty.
Consecutive, so.
Sentencing today.
About a total of?
Forty to fifty-two.
It's like I can't go that fast to tell.
Do you want us to sit here and watch it decide about?
This seems exciting.
It is.
We're just sorry about we need a cup of coffee or something.
I think I have to go to the barns. We could all go to the barn together. She's been talking about it for a while now. She's been pushing all day. I don't think we should all go to the barn.
Adam Clark, he says we gotta go to the barn.
Just like listing all the names.
Cheers.
That makes it an enjoyable meeting. See you guys.
Yeah, glad you got to see me.
Good seeing all of you. Bye, Dirk. Bye.
That one's been a little while.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
I feel like I have to explain my absences. I will not be at the meeting tonight because I have to get my children.
I won't be there either. I have to go watch my son present a Greek play.
Oh, that's so exciting. What's his part?
He is Justin Bieber.
I don't remember him as being one of the great guys.
Oh, me either. And he kept saying he was Justin Bieber and I'm like, are you sure you're doing a Greek play? And he's like, yes, mom. And he has to wear a toga.
Pharmacy nurses, nurses is.
No. And so, um, it was panicking. First I had to find a sheet. Once I found a sheet, I'm like Googling last night, trying to figure out how to make a toga out of this sheet, right? And I finally find one.
You throw a shoulder tight around your waist.
No, I finally find one, right? And I was finally getting to come out so that I could practice. And he's like, I spent, okay, let me put my video playing. He goes, I already know how they taught us at school. So I spent all this time and he already knows how to do it. So we run through it a few times and yep, got it figured out and.
Make sure you wear something underneath.
Oh, he would just.
Well, it might, it might get pretty real in a hurry.
Okay, so you're gonna wear short sleeve, long sleeve, tank top, shorts, pants, and he hadn't decided that quite, so we'll do that when we get home, but. It's just like, whatever.
And I was a senior in high school. That was right after Animal House come out.
Oh, gosh.
So they was, years before, they'd always pick an era and they redressed that era first day of school. Well, our principal canceled it that year when we were seniors. We couldn't do that. So the senior class took them up for a salvo toco party before school. So we went to school in bed sheets. Remember the shop teacher saying, you, 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 you're all getting zero, sit on the bench.
Well, he's wearing his toga and then he's gotta wear his hat, like side, baseball cap sideways, like.
Bieber style.
And I'm like, why are you doing that? And he was trying to show me. Have to be a black hat, don't get any writing on it.
I don't remember. I don't remember that in Greek philosophy.
I didn't go to school here, so I don't know.
Justin Bieber. He wasn't around when I was around.
Not part of it. I don't, I don't know. And he's gotta sing songs of Justin Bieber, so. It's gonna be quite, and then he sings one song, um, Bye Bye Bye, and Justin Bieber's wife says, that's not your song.
These have three.
Jerking by the ear and it has to be quite nasty. There's four different classes doing four different plays.
Three.
He said he thinks they're half hour a piece, so that's four or two hours sitting there.
One.
We'll see.
One.
One.
Excellent. And then you guys are done?
Yes.
Yep.
See, that's why I put public comment. I shouldn't have commented here because now no one can comment. I did it here because he said here.
I left the talk here. We still had all this to go through. If they don't say anything here, we'd already.
Our no through traffic signs.
The air in the middle.
Well, maybe they won't help and maybe they will. You might know if I see a no through traffic sign, I turn.
I get it.
If I'm in a strange place.
I think I talked to help us. And all you gotta do is say, under construction, no traffic, because I've been on Google Maps and stuff.
If it was just.
Well, road closure, construction.
And not a hospital board district.
You know, because no local's gonna use it because have you ever looked, used your Google Maps and it rerouted it like?
Rerouted.
And all of a sudden it's like, oh, I know why I'm over here because that's all in construction.
Who's, who's the authority over the district? The hospital. Who would be the authority over?
The public. That's the only way they can remove them, like they're doing now.
I thought that was gonna be a lynching last week.
So you guys can remove the male board.
And it rerouted me through neighborhood.
Library board. You guys cannot remove.
Don't get a cry.
I remember that, that day because Navatney had to get back to.
Museum district. Anybody that's voted on, you guys cannot.
Going on interstate all the way over to like Sydney.
You think that's a pure stroke?
Come up through with the district.
Oh, and cash, like to re, to remove them maybe?
Chad up that way. Get back up to ninety because it was that area down here. That was, that was his only route to get home.
As we've seen a long time.
He'd want to spend another weekend in Cheyenne.
A lot of people make up their own rules and say their statutes.
They're right.
Oh, that's, I've been packing since this hospital thing's been going on in museum. I've been packing my statute book with me.
Oh, I thought you were, you were packing something else.
No, people have been calling me at my house and they were, um, calling me last night to see what their, um, how their counting board needed to count write-ins. And I said, it is up to the counting board saying, um, there's a hundred J Jacobsons. Well, then they have to specify, specify, I'm voting for John Jacobson or, um, Joe Jacobson. They have to specify. But if there's only one Garrett Borden, G Borden, it's not the same as Garrett Borden. It's just up to that counting board and they have to figure that out when their county's writing. But it says that right in the state statute. It's up to that counting board. This one is easy.
There's definitely some interesting things going on out there.
Utilities.
Oh, yeah, easy one.
Yeah. But I would have to answer the call, take down their number, go to my phone, find the stuff on, in, in the, um, book. So now I just pack my book and say, okay, hold on, we go to that statute. And I've been highlighting stuff because it's like, okay, this question's been asked several times. And it's weird because I'll get a call from one person and then five minutes later I'll get a call from a different person with that same question, almost like those people are together. And then I'm wanting to see if I can give them the same answers.
Did you?
Yeah, it's like, it's black and white and I can't lie what the state statute says.
Right. Well, the state statutes can interpret it, which is why they are doing it.
And that is very true. There's twenty-three county clerks who can interpret it twenty-five different ways. There's twenty-three county attorneys who can also interpret it twenty-five different ways.
How'd you tell it was a T in that word?
Yay. And the county clerks, it's part of their job. They have someone coming in, say like the commissioners or the attorney, trying to tell us how to do our job that we do every day. And they interpret it just how their opinion is, when they don't actually know.
Right.
How it's to be done.
Well, convince other people that that's fact too. That's a thing.
So frustrating. Some people, if they have something told to them that that is fact and they get it in a fit, there is no telling them that's not how it's supposed to be.
Make a motion to approve vouchers, that. Hurry up.
These are, I'm gonna approve them all. These are all gonna be signed, so you can move forward.
Second. So that was the pre-motion to motion, yeah. Motion to adjourn has been, um, made and seconded.
No, that was to approve vouchers.
Oh, approve vouchers, yeah. I thought it was adjourned.
No.
That was second, second. Undiscussion. All those in favor?
Aight.
Meeting adjourned.